From the Good News United Methods Church will lead us in prayer and then we'll do the pledge.
Let's pray together. God, we thank you for this beautiful place we call home and we thank you for this rain today that brings life and reminds us of so much that you give to us. And as we gather today, we pray for these leaders of our county. We pray that they would lead with integrity, that they would remember the less fortunate us among us, and that they would seek to make decisions based on the long-term positive, even if that may mean sometimes a short-term negative. We pray for wisdom to lead, courage to act, and gratitude for all that you've entrusted to us. And we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. We'd like to recognize our illustrious superintendent, Mr. Russell Hughes, and representing our tax collector, Brian McBroom, has a request to speak for Mrs. Rhonda Skipper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. We just saw Ms. Skipper wasn't able to be here. That was her plan to be here this afternoon, and she was unable to at last minute. So I just wanted to give you the news that she wanted to give you today. We're required to keep money, our deposits in account, excuse me, that will earn interest. And she just wanted to let you know that that interest has increased this year more than usual. And it's been a long time since we've seen a real reportable revenue for interest. This year, over the past year, it is $135,646.60. So the board's portion of that is $118,651.51. And that's going to be distributed later this week to y'all. And we just wanted to make sure you knew that was coming. It was unexpected. It was a lot more than we usually would have got. So she just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Our we thank her.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brian.
All right.
Okay. Consideration of the, first of all, do we have any, any people that want to speak on any agenda item that have to leave after? Sorry about that. I jumped ahead of myself. Consider any addition and deletions to the agenda.
Proud to report we have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll have public comment for any agenda item with, if you have to leave before the agenda item comes up, we'll take those comments now. But you will have time to speak when the agenda item does come up. See none? Got one? Okay, come ahead. Please state your name and spell your last name for the clerk.
And what agenda?
And what agenda?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Clay Matthews, last name M.A.T.H.E.W.S. And this is as to the beach activities ordinance agenda item. I'm an attorney from Smoker Bartlett from Tampa, Florida, and we represent over 50 private beachfront property owners. We understand that it's been previously recommended to the board that the board accept a proposed revision to this ordinance, which would prohibit the placement of beach equipment on private beachfront property within 15 feet of the water's edge. And after corresponding with County Attorney Ms. Noiz, I understand that it's not included in the actual ordinance that'll be set for public hearing today. But Ms. Noiz will be requesting direction from the U.S. whether or not this is something the boards are going to want to consider and pursue in the future. And I'm appearing today to ask that you do not, and for several reasons. Number one, that type of restriction would inordinately burden and unreasonably interfere with our clients and other beachfront property owners' use and enjoyment of their private beachfront property on the most precious and valuable part of their beachfront, the area just landward of the water's edge. As you know, our clients and other beachfront property owners paid large premiums to acquire these beachfronts and pay substantial property taxes each and every year to have these properties. And this type of restriction would preclude their use and enjoyment of those areas. Undoubtedly, this would result in a massive flurry of lawsuits against the county, notably for claims under the due process clause, the equal protection clause, the Burt J. Harris Private Properties Act, and a facial claim that the ordinance would be void for vagueness. And these bases for these claims are set forth in our letter to you dated February 8th, 2019, which I hope that you've all read. Secondly, this restriction would be totally impracticable and essentially unenforceable. As you know, the water's edge is ambulatory, and it moves up and down, north and south, in accordance with the ebb and flow of the tide. And as such, this zone of beach equipment prohibition would be unclear. It'd be difficult to comply with throughout the day, and it would be almost impossible for your code enforcement to enforce throughout the day. If you place your chair on the beach at one point and it's compliant, and then you move it throughout the day, or the tide moves throughout the day, then all of a sudden you're not compliant. Later on in the day, you'd have to, you'd have to monitor the placement of your beach equipment throughout the day, and the code enforcement would have to monitor it throughout the day as this zone of beach equipment prohibition moves throughout the day. Again, it would just be unenforceable, and that's why it would ultimately be void for vagueness and unenforceable. And lastly, this restriction would just be unnecessary. As you know, the public has a right to use the wet sand seaward of the mean high waterline. This additional 15 feet of clear corridor would just be unnecessary and would not serve any legitimate public need. And again, would just result in a massive amount of lawsuits against the county. So if Ms. Noiz or anybody else is to propose this restriction to you in the future, in a future draft of the ordinance, we ask that you say that you do not want to consider it and that you do not pursue it moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Do you have any comments?
No.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Does the board have any consent agenda item for further discussion, removal? See none?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of waste management expenditure? Approval list?
Mr. Chairman, I acknowledge my conflict of interest. I have filed a proper form with the clerk and will abstain from the vote.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the first item under administration is a presentation from Dr. Harper regarding the stormwater report that he did for Driftwood Estates. Couple things before we get to that. You'll notice that this item is listed here under admin, and it's also is further listed again under legal. We did that earlier in order to allow time for talk and discuss the stormwater issues at this time and to discuss any legal issues that may arise or questions under Ms. Noiz's time. The question was asked, can you do it all at once? That's certainly the board's call. So just want to make you aware that there are, that it is listed twice on the agenda, and that was done for a reason. But can you, you can certainly do it all at the same time if you so desire as far as we're concerned. But.
Do you need a motion for that?
Sure.
A motion would just consolidate both of Ms. Noiz under the item number 30 on the agenda.
Second.
And just for clarity, that you still have the ability to take any action you wish to take at the conclusion of Dr. Harper's report and your questions and comments.
Any other comment from the board? Any comment from the audience? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Wait a minute. Got one in the back.
I just wanted y'all to turn y'all mic up. We can't hear y'all.
Lewis, see anything we can do?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Jones?
So it's Dr. Harper's time on the agenda to discuss and make his presentation of the report that he did on, at Driftwoods on the behest of the board of county commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, may I have the floor?
Yes.
There's been, I got a, as you know, I'm a commercial fisherman here in the Choctawatchee Bay, and I have a lot of people, I have a lot of friends of mine come by my office and make calls to me about the condition of the Choctawatchee Bay. And just want to let you know, it's a major concern that I've seen as I grew up here locally. You know, I've seen the condition of this bay diminish over the last 20 years, you know. This bay, can you hear me?
Hang on.
Can't you hear me?
I'll turn my.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
No.
Hello?
You're not here.
How about, you hear me outside?
[laughing]
Okay. I'm holding it wrong. But as y'all know, I'm a commercial fisherman here locally in the Choctawatchee Bay. I grew up here in the Choctawatchee Bay, and it's been my life. You know, that's my backyard out there. And my friends have come to me and told me, said, you know, this bay doesn't look healthy as it was many years ago. And I've recognized that. You know, I've seen that myself. I've seen the oysters diminish throughout the years over the last 10, 15, 20 years. You know, this bay is a major economic stability for this, for this area. You know, and it's our quality of life here in Walton County for us citizens. And I want to do something about it, you know. I want to step up and do something about it. Mr. Jones, can you tell me about the restore fund?
Yes, sir. And probably in this instance, we would talk specifically about pot three of the restore funds. And if you recall, pot three was through the state of Florida. There's between $12 and $13 million set aside for Walton County in that pot. We had anticipated using it for local match for triumph dollars on the 331 corridor. As you're all aware, that project has been killed at the triumph level. So we've got to find another direction to move. So that pot of money holds $10, $12 million. That is available for use at the discretion of the board. I can tell you that there are certain requirements to use those funds. Things like cleaning up the bay, cleaning up environmental issues, and doing things that we seem to be talking about this evening, I believe, fall within those criteria. It would take an effort on the board's part and take action on the board for us to begin the process of doing some research and to determine exactly how to replace what the current request is with a new request. But with board action, the staff would be more than happy to begin down that path. And like I said, there's $10 to $12 million that's available that I believe would be well used in a situation that we're talking about.
I'd like, I'd like you to use $10 million to the restore and protect this Choctawatchee Bay.
Okay.
Can you make that happen with our staff?
If you.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. We would absolutely begin the process this week of how we replace the current request with a new request. We'll keep, staff keep you posted and up to date on what that looks like and what it looks like moving forward, if that's the desire.
Well, I have a comment. I think.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we need to hear Dr. Harper's report and his improvements and maintenance requests. I think they need to align. If we're going to dedicate $10 million, we need to discuss these improvements and these maintenance procedures, not just in-house. I think we need to hear, number one, Dr. Harper's report, and then allocate the money based on this, these recommendations. So.
And I don't disagree. I would suggest that we, before we start allocating funds.
I agree.
We look at this Dr. Harper's report. We do some other work around the bay so that if we have $10 million to spend, where's the best bang for the buck to spend $10 million? And considering these items and the others, that would be added to that mix.
Mr. Chairman?
You go first.
I'm a member of the Choctawatchee Bay Estuary Coalition. It's made up of Holmes County, Washington County, Walton County, and Oakliss County. And our task is to try and see what we can do to also improve the health of the bay. We've even reached out to Alabama because the Pee River and Choctawatchee start up in Alabama and work our way. So whatever we would do down here, if we don't get the backing up there in Alabama, and they don't take some measures, then it would impact us downstream. We are meeting tomorrow. We're going over a whole lot of information. But there's more to what's having an impact on the bay than maybe Driftwood or anything else. We have hundreds of septic tanks that are along the Choctawatchee Bay that are having an influence on what's in the bay. So I think by looking at it holistically, as far as Driftwood and any other entity along LaGrange or Alacoa or any of those that have any septic tanks to be brought into that discussion, so we know how to properly apply the funds at what location.
You know, the Choctawatchee watershed makes up about 70, and the Choctawatchee Bay makes up about 75% of Walton County. So, and just backing up what you're saying there, sir, you know, the septic tanks, stormwater runoff is a major issue, not just here locally, but everywhere throughout county.
Mr. Gladwell, do you have something to say?
I think mine needs to be another motion, so.
Okay.
And if I can just add this to what we've said, these requests for the dollars that have come from Restore Act are very well scrutinized. This request will have to be approved by the state consortium, which is a group of 23 counties that recommends projects to the state, which has to approve them through their approval process, and then on to the U.S. Treasury, which has to approve them. It's not a short process, so we won't have a check next week or two weeks for $10 million. But when it comes down to the pike, we will also be required to monitor how it's used, to make sure it's used in line with what we told them we were going to do, and be subject to audit so that we've done what we said we were going to do. Otherwise, there's callback provisions there, and they'll come get the money. So if, these are the commitments we make. Once we start drawing off of those funds, that's where the money has to go, or like I said, they'll come get it, and we'll pay it back from some other source.
As to this motion, the.
Let's finish with this one first.
That's why, as to this motion, the bay, as Commissioner Chapman said, is vital, and that's going to be, going forward in the state, that's going to be a big state priority for all watersheds. So the quicker we get money and resources devoted to fixing our watershed, particularly fixing the bay, the faster that, we can, or the easier that we can avoid problems from Tallahassee. So the motion is a wise choice of our money. And as Commissioner Chapman said, we need to not only focus on one particular area, but the, and talking to the CBA and other people who are monitoring the bay. Eagle Creek over the septic systems along Villatastow and Choctaw Bay, Choctaw Beach, the McDaniel Fish Camp area, which the city of Freeport's working on a grant to get. But that's a critical concern. And then Driftwood, Sandeston, Hogtown, all those places are critical, and we need to, to start spending our money to fix those. And the quicker we start, the better off we'll be, in my opinion. That's me.
Any other comment? Any comment from the audience?
I do have a comment. We also need to stay in-house and think about this in-house. This is our report. This is a report that we were asked for by the special magistrate. And it also, we have to consider how we're moving forward with development, because that's what this all boils down to. It's a major amount of development. So we need to also do a little bit of in-house talking about how we're going to slow things down and make our stormwater work for us while we put this much money back into our county from the taxpayers. Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Dr. Harper?
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Harvey Harper. I am here to discuss the results of the Driftwood Stormwater Study that we completed recently. First of all, and I, I can't see the screen. I know that this project has been going on for a long time. The issues with, thank you, the issues with Driftwood Estates have been going on for some time. So I'd like to discuss just a little bit of the project history. It originated with Sandeston, about a less than 2,000 acre community, which was approved by Walton County in October 1976. An application for development approval was filed in 1974, and it outlined all the measures that were going to be taken to control stormwater, water supply, and so forth. Driftwood Estates has two phases. Phase one's the exterior, platted in 1979. Phase two is the interior, which was platted in three separate phases. There's an ongoing dispute between the county and the Driftwood Homeowners Association over allegations of flooding within the, particularly within the exterior areas. And in 2008, they agreed to, the parties agreed to have a special magistrate look at the issues and make findings of fact. The interior areas runoff is collected either in underground storm sewers or in roadside swales. The runoff is then diverted into a series of shallow, wet detention ponds that provide some water quality treatment and also attenuation of runoff discharges so that they specifically don't exceed the pre-development discharge. The exterior areas are collected primarily by roadside swales. You can see the roadside swales in the photographs. Some of these are conveyed under driveways by culverts. Others have no culverts under the driveway. And both the interior and exterior share outfalls. You can see one of the outfalls. I believe that's Outfall Five. I could be mistaken. But it's, they're heavily overgrown, very, very difficult for water to pass through those. The one on the right is also an outfall. It looks more like a forest than an outfall. But again, that's one of the shared outfalls that discharges to the bay. The special magistrate heard the issues and recommended that an independent study be conducted by a stormwater engineer to specifically look at the stormwater issues. He was, he charged us with selecting an appropriate model, determine if there have been significant changes since, to the systems that are not consistent with the design, and determine if the stormwater system meets the three-day, 24-hour DRI standard. And if not, then determine what type of system is required to do that. On the right, you see some photographs of flooding that were provided by some of the homeowners on the exterior portion. And I would point out that the county and the homeowners disagree over whether or not flooding occurs. The homeowners think those pictures depict flooding. The county feels that flooding only occurs when water goes into the residence. So our work efforts, we were contracted in 2015 by, as satisfaction or to satisfy the special magistrate's recommendations. We reviewed more than 30 documents, wrote a technical memorandum in 2015 regarding one of the issues, conducted a special purpose survey to look at actual conditions in some of the areas, and we issued our report on December 10th. The first issue, retention versus detention. The DRI standard, and I quoted the language there, has to hold stormwater on-site in a series of interconnected lakes adequate in size to retain runoff from a three-year design storm of a 24-hour duration. That's 6.7 inches of rainfall. That means that the water has to be kept in the ponds and cannot be released. And it only can be removed from the ponds by evaporation or irrigation onto the ground surface or infiltration into the soil. There was some discussion about whether it was a retention or detention standard. I think the record is very clear that it is a retention standard, and the current systems for both the exterior and interior do not meet the DRI standard. We also did stormwater modeling. One of our tasks was to select an appropriate model, which we did. Walton County also gave us their stormwater model of the, both interior and exterior areas. We believe that it provides a reasonable representation of what's there. We noted some deficiencies, things that we may have done differently, but they are not sufficient to significantly alter the results of the modeling. A pre-development model was developed for the overall site, and we looked at the peak discharge rate for the 25-year, 24-hour storm, 10.56 inches. That's one way of evaluating runoff under pre and post conditions to see if there's a flooding potential. And we found that there's about a half of a cubic feet per second, per acre of area on the general area prior to development. Under post-development conditions, we found that the interior discharge rate for the same storm is .48 CFS per acre, which is less than it was under pre-development conditions. So at least based upon the model, there doesn't appear to be any concern with flooding from the interior areas compared with what was there in pre-development. We also looked at the interior and exterior discharge rate, and the combined rate is also .48 CFS. Now, you might say, well, how can one area be .4 CFS per acre, and if you combine them together, it's still .48 CFS per acre? And the reason for that is that the interior has the series of ponds that capture the water, store it, release it at a slow rate. The exterior has no ponds or treatment of any kind, and so the water just discharges immediately, as fast as it can, to the outfalls. Now, that model was conducted using the design conditions for both the interior and the exterior, which are not there now, at least in the exterior. We then looked at a new model for exterior conditions under, exterior discharge under current conditions based upon the survey that was conducted. And we looked at it for a 10-year level of service, which is the one that's required by the county for stormwater systems designed with swales. And the model predicted that under current conditions, flooding would occur, and that it would be three to eight inches on the east side and five to nine inches on the west side. And that's exactly what appears to be occurring. So the exterior does not meet the county required level of service for a 10-year storm. And why is that? Well, the exterior is two to three feet lower in elevation than the interior. The water table is very near the surface during times of the year, and in fact, even intersects the bottom of some of the swales. and in fact even intersects the bottom of some of the swales during wet season conditions. So the high water table prevents the water in the swell from infiltrating into the ground very quickly, if at all. The swales are poorly graded, there's really no slope to carry the water anywhere. The roads have virtually no slope. So, the water tends to collect in the swales and really has nowhere to go. A lot of the existing driveway culverts that are designed to carry the water from one side of the driveway to the other are clogged. The survey indicated that about a third of the existing driveway culverts are silted up, clogged up sufficiently to where they would essentially prohibit transfer of water from one side to the other. So, the water gets in the swales, it can't move from one to the other, it builds up, overflows the driveway, and goes into the street. Another, and perhaps even more significant issue, are the outfalls that I showed you previously. There are, I believe, six shared outfalls that the interior and exterior share jointly that discharge stormwater into the bay. Virtually all of them are clogged to the point where water has extreme difficulty in getting through these. And that hindrance is one of the primary reasons for the flooding conditions that have been observed. This is a photograph of some of the driveway culverts. You can see that a lot of those are silted in. The one on the upper left is just about totally closed. And those can't convey water, so the water has to either overtop the driveway or flow down the street. In addition, they're highly variable in size. They range from eight inches to 18 inches. There's no standard design for the stormwater system in the exterior like there is in the interior. On the east side, again, up on the upper right, there's one which is open, but the other two are almost totally silted up and closed. So, there's some maintenance issues that need to be done. On the left here, we have a picture of water in a swell that simply has nowhere to go because there's no pipe under this particular driveway. So the only way that that water can go anywhere is either to build up to the point where it flows over the driveway, and since the driveway is higher at that point than the street, that means it's also going to flood the street as well. Alright, so we developed cost estimates for maintenance to clean out all the driveway culverts, reshape the swales to the design they should be, put some slope on the swales if possible, and clean out the densely grown-in outfalls. And that estimate's about $2 million. The last task that we were assigned was to develop a cost estimate for recommended improvements to provide the level of service required by Walton County. That one's a little pricier, requires installing a storm sewer system, and because there's no slope on the land, the storm sewer system has to slope all the way to the outfall, so it gets deeper and deeper and deeper as you go, so the water will flow through it, and that adds to the cost. So, that's a substantially more elevated cost for that. And that's...
And Dr. Harper, if you would, you could just have a seat right up front here, and I think we'll have more discussion and possibly public comment.
Can we ask him some questions?
So, it's up to you guys how you'd like to proceed, if you want to take public comment first or do your questions first, however.
Let's take public comment first.
As members of the public come up, I do want to make a note. So please direct any questions that you may have to the chair. Once we've received all the public comment, at that point, the commissioners can address those questions with Dr. Harper directly. So please, don't ask him questions directly, but address comments to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I am here on behalf of Walton County Taxpayer Association, so I would ask for additional time for the group as per the board's policy.
And that's fine. Under our current policy, a member of a group or organization can be allowed up to 10 minutes to speak, but then any other members of that board would not be allowed to speak. So if you're a member of the board for the Walton County Taxpayers Association, you would not be able to speak. You're yielding your time to Mr. Bagby.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I come for you this evening representing the Walton County Taxpayer Association as its vice chair. We want to thank you for this opportunity to speak on what we believe is a very important and vital issue facing Walton County and the surrounding region. That issue is the discharge of stormwater into Choctawatchee Bay. Let us be clear, our presentation is not about assigning blame. Our goal is to provide the impetus you need to take on this issue that has grown like a cancer over the last 20 years through multiple decisions by previous commissions and actions by various individuals and corporations. How we got here is not near as important as how we address this issue going forward. We heard Dr. Harper outline the stormwater-related issues in the Driftwood Estates portion of the Sandeston DRI, based on at least 15 years of non-compliance with the DRI stormwater standards. While his report is very troubling, what is more troubling is that it addresses just a microcosm of a much larger problem. The larger problem is lack of enforcement, not just in Driftwood Estates, and not just in the Sandeston DRI, but stormwater runoff around the entire Choctawatchee Bay basin. This problem encompasses the misuse of mosquito-controlled ditches for stormwater treatment and attenuation. This problem includes allowing development to use outfalls and bayous as direct conduits for stormwater discharge. This problem involves septic tanks, as has been previously pointed out by yourselves. This problem affects the quality of life for everyone in Walton County, not just those who are fortunate enough to have property along the bay. There are those who will seek to minimize the challenge we face. They will tell you that the problem is not ours to fix. They will talk of silt flowing down the river. To give them credence requires you to suspend reality. The silt theory requires you to believe that a river that has flowed for thousands of years and provided us with the beautiful silica that manifests itself on our beaches has now, for some unknown reason, decided to deposit mud and muck along the shores of our bay. Their theory requires you to dismiss the degradation of a body of water that is identified as a Class II surface water body suitable for shellfish propagation to a bay where we are challenged to reintroduce shellfish beds. Their theory also requires you to disbelieve your own eyes as you look at the changes, particularly over the last 10 years, of photographic evidence of degradation in the form of satellite photos, particularly around Driftwood Estates. Finally, it requires you to look the other way at the increasing numbers of dead fish that find their way to the bay shores. No, we have caused this problem, and only we can solve it. So how does Walton County Taxpayer Association propose that we solve the challenge before us? The first step in every problem-solving methodology is to admit you have a problem. We ask that you pass a resolution identifying stormwater-related issues as a primary concern of the county, and that you take action to address that concern. Specific actions that we would recommend include, but are not limited to, the following. First, you should vote to make stormwater-related issues the number-one priority for both your state and national lobbyists, seeking grants or other funding streams. Second, you should make this the top issue for our legislative delegation in Tallahassee. Next, you should increase the TIF allocation to 100% and direct that all the increase be dedicated and applied to stormwater-related issues. Next, you should engage an engineering firm to clearly identify the sources of the stormwater runoff and resultant impact on the Choctawatchee Bay. They should further recommend necessary steps to bring us back into compliance with our own, or in Sandeston's case, its DRIs, existing legal requirements. Once those recommendations are received, you should direct staff to develop an operational and funding plan to accomplish those recommendations. Finally, you should develop and fund an ongoing maintenance plan to ensure that we do not slide back into non-compliance and find ourselves in the same shape or worse than what we are now. There are those who will argue that the fix is too expensive. Those folks remind me of the old saying, that there's never enough time to do it right, but there's always enough time to do it over. The same can be said for funding. We can choose a proactive approach, or we can be forced into a reactive approach by endless lawsuits and litigation. The Taxpayer Association believes we are at an opportune turning point. We have a governor and a legislature that are poised to make an initial down payment of $750 million on the resurrection of the Everglades. They have shown their commitment to improving water quality throughout the state. The Choctawatchee Bay basin is our Everglades. We have, we also have the Triumph Board's commitment to economic and quality of life improvements. We believe both the state and the Triumph Board want to help us, but first we have to show we are committed to solving this problem and are all in on doing our part. The use of restore funds is a good first step, but it is insufficient to solve the total challenge. The seal behind you puts it very simply: Pride, Preservation, Conservation. If ever there was a time that those words were meaningful and cogent, it is now. Several of you have campaigned on preserving and protecting the bay. Now is the time for your rhetoric to be matched by your action. You, and you alone, can lead us to a future with a better environment, a better quality of life, and a better bay. Or, you can let us continue to slowly become a place referred to as one that once had so much potential. I leave you this evening with my favorite line from the West Point Cadet Prayer: "Make us to choose the harder right instead of the easier wrong, and never to be content with a half-truth when the whole can be won." We're asked that you choose the harder right, for if you do, we will all be better. Thank you for your time, your service, and your leadership on this critical issue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. I'd like to bring up a point that I don't think I've ever heard anybody mention. Okay, so, this man said that before the development was there, there was a certain amount of inches of runoff. Okay, that's how much water was running off the land and not being absorbed down into it. Like you have all of these building rules about the water that's supposed to go down in the ground where the house is now has to be held and released, and that's what this is part of. The problem, why it's rampant all over the island, is because you don't realize how much water is being held above the ground. Like you've covered the ground, the water that's going into the ground, and you've measured the water that runs off. But before Sandeston was there, the seven or eight inches of water that ran off every week has now actually doubled because there's no plants left where the houses are. A fully mature aloe plant could absorb as much as a pound of water in one rainfall when it hasn't seen water in a long time. So if you have a house on a lot that used to have 10 aloe plants on it, and the water runoff was seven inches, if you take those 10 aloe plants off and put a house there, you now have 10 pounds of water extra over those seven inches. Everywhere on the island, that is why everything, the math isn't working out, is because there used to be nothing but water-absorbent vegetation on this island, which is why you're supposed to build as small as you can. So all of the statistics are just completely distorted because of that, and that's why there's so many problems, is because you really built way too much and over all of the limits, and you killed all the plants that used to take care of us. Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Sean Heath. I represent the folks from Driftwood and have for a number of years. And I know probably only Larry Jones has lived this whole story about Driftwood since it began in about 2004. The, I won't go into the whole history, because we're here at a great point, and that is with an opportunity to actually take the next step to what's been asked for a number of years. But, one aspect of the history is important in terms of when the flooding began in around 2004, 2005, the people from the Driftwood neighborhood, many of them board members, people outside the neighborhood, came many, many times to this body and asked many, many times for relief in a variety of forms, and particularly to stop the development at its time, step back, get an engineering analysis to find out what's going on, and then develop a plan going forward, and otherwise get the people who were developing the neighborhood at that time to participate in some of that remediation cost. This board decided along the years in that process, and at one point affirmatively said, "We, the county, are going to accept responsibility for Driftwood, to maintain it." And so, that's where we are. The county has decided, decided years ago, that it would accept responsibility to maintain it and to improve it. And we heard Dr. Harper's report, it doesn't, the existing stormwater system there doesn't meet any standard. It doesn't provide any water quality treatment for anything that goes into the bay. It doesn't provide any stormwater management treatment. Now, so it is unquestionably a failed system. Unquestionably, the neighborhood floods, the yards flood, the driveways flood, the roadways flood at times under certain rain events. And then they create nuisance conditions, and they've done this for a number of years. Now, Driftwood is perhaps the largest single neighborhood in all of Walton County. It has over 700 home sites. It has more linear footage of bayfront than any other development in the county. So it is a big development. And it is hugely important, you know, on the magnitude of treating stormwater to address what's going on in Driftwood. And so these are dollars well spent. The Restore Act funds, I remind, there were a couple of settlement agreements of lawsuits, and the Restore Act funds provisions of that contract, those settlement agreements are to use, I'm here on behalf of the association, so I'm, the, and I'll be quick, are to use those Restore Act funds as a condition of the settlement agreement. So that is great that they're available, because now that they've become available, they are intended to be and used for Driftwood, so that's fantastic. And in fact, the dollar amounts are roughly sufficient to improve Driftwood and get this condition finally behind them. There is one thing, Dr. Harper's report at a couple of spots, and there may have been an inference that the homeowners and the homeowners' association has a responsibility to maintain the stormwater system out there. Actually, they have no right to do so, they have no authority to touch the county's property.
I'm sorry, so are you speaking on behalf of the Greater Driftwood Homeowners Association?
The, I'll conclude, a number of homeowners out there. But in any event, the, so, now's an easy moment in time to take the next step. One of the things that could be done is to, that costs the county nothing, is to issue an RFP, to have design firms come in and tell you what's possible, and then to look at going forward the Restore Act funds in that way. Subject to your questions?
No.
Thank you.
Are you aware, Mr. Heath, the county's doing a stormwater project right now in Driftwood? It's five phases, and two of those have already been complete?
I am aware that that project was started. We actually asked that before that project commenced to any length, to get an engineering analysis to understand whether or not those expenditure of funds would actually result in a stormwater system that functions and meets the level of service. I understand that there was no, actually, an engineering analysis to determine whether or not that in actual would function. or not that in actual would function in a way to either manage stormwater sufficiently or to provide any water quality treatment.
My understanding is, is that this is water that they're building pipes, they're replacing the ditch system with pipes, and also that they're putting water treatment facilities at these outfalls. So, are you familiar with that?
Well, I will say, one thing, Dr. Harper, your report and your observation was as of October 2019, is that correct?
Eighteen.
Mr., let's, let's let Mr. Gladwell finish.
I agree. Phase one and phase two have been complete.
Yeah, and phase three starts in September, so there is a, there is several, there is a plan in place. And I was just wondering if you had any information as to whether any of that's working, or do your...
Actually, I don't know how it's functioning. I do know the concern is that the county would expend a significant amount of money for that project, and then it would get to the end, and it doesn't function. I do know from talking to some, some engineering folks that looked preliminarily at what's being done, that they think the pipes are grossly undersized, and we know that it has not been designed to meet any standard. The only design document that I saw regarding this was a single hand-drawn sketch on a piece of graph paper as to the design, and that was just sort of a typical condition. What I gather, the, what's being done is they're just kind of going out in the field, looking at it, digging it out, sticking in a pipe, and then with no really engineered analysis that it in fact will meet the county's own requirements.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we may, I would like to provide the opportunity for our engineering folks to provide a more detailed analysis of what's going on to each of you. If you'll give us that opportunity, we'd be glad to get that done, so you will know exactly what's been done, what's going to be done, and the anticipated results of that work.
Yeah, and it'd be great if you'd keep the board informed of that, so they would be able to know, you know, at least have some input as to understanding what's going to be done in their neighborhood.
I, I know that Public Works does involve the homeowners' association, and has met with the, I'm sorry, I know Public Works has met with the homeowners', Greater Driftwood Homeowners' Association about the work that they've been doing.
Right.
And I'm sure they will continue to do so.
Our fear is, what if it doesn't work? And we know it doesn't provide any water quality treatment.
But it does. My understanding is, is there's a, a water treatment facility that they paid $50,000 for at one of those outfalls that treats the water before it's released into the bay. So, at least in, in one of these phases, there is water treatment that is going on. So, not, I don't know if it's, I mean, I was just asking, do you have any information as to whether that's working or not?
I, I have no information as to whether it's functioning or whether it's even meeting a standard. In fact, I don't think it was engineered to design, and it didn't meet any design standard, and that's, that's frankly, it has to. And y'all frankly should know whether it's designed to meet your own requirement.
Is there water standing in people's yards today, and in the street today at Driftwood?
In, in this time period, under rains?
Today.
Yes.
I, I mean, I drove out there, I was out there Friday, and I didn't see anything. I mean, I didn't see anything as of Friday. But I didn't know if it's today, after the rain we've had today, do we have people, do we have yards underwater today or in people's houses today?
There's rain.
We have rain. I know we had rain, but do we, is it standing in people's yards today from the little bit of rain that we've had?
Ma'am, if you want to talk, wait and come up. You can answer his question, but come up and identify yourself, please.
Well, in fairness, he's asking the question, and frankly, I haven't been out there today or talked to them to know whether or not it's the conditions today.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we'll get you the information, Sean.
Thank you very much.
Is, is Mr. Heath representing you?
I am Jim Hobson. I'm a member of the Driftwood, Greater Driftwood Homeowners' Association Board.
Okay, alright.
And in answer to your question, Mr. Nick, there are yards along the western side of Driftwood, on Driftwood Point Road, that still, even with the lack of rain, have water in their ditches.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and, and make a couple of comments, and then anybody else can speak if they wants to. In May of 2005, I made my first trip to the Funiac Springs to appear before the county commissioners, and the purpose was to go up there was to talk about whether the Driftwood area was meeting the Sandeston DRI. We alleged that it was not, and after that time period, we were basically ignored. We were persistent, and in 2008, the county agreed to have a special magistrate come in and take a look at our area. The special magistrate agreed with us that there were problems there, but he wasn't an expert, and asked that the county get an engineer to come in and take a look at it. That was basically ignored for several years, and finally, they agreed to hire Dr. Harper to come in and take a look at our area. Dr. Harper's report, as he's told you today, tells you that our area does not meet the Sandeston DRI. We are not retaining water. I would just like to say that I'm glad that Dr. Harper presented his report and verified what we've been telling you all for 14 years, that we're not in compliance. And I asked the forest whether the, what's been done in Driftwood is benefiting. It has eliminated some of the water in the area where those have been put in, but that water is not being retained. It is still being discharged directly into the bay. Thank you very much.
For the record, Alan Osborne, I'm not going to dwell into the past, you see what it is. I said this in 1998, and I said it in '04. I live on that bay. I used to catch a whole cast net full of Elwah behind my house. I ain't seen one in years, nor a storm crab. Used to catch enough of them eventually. But no, it's not working, and I don't think those phases are even fair. The issue tonight with stormwater quality is, we're not talking about Alabama, I agree that's an issue, but your issue is what's going on right now. And if all, and if you notice, Dr. Harper's survey was after two phases. So after the county spent two phases without a real engineering plan, you have 0% compliance. So, if you're supposed to retain the water, if your water treatment facility is that water box right before the pipe, and then you dump it anyway, you violate the development order. Don't you want, and, and the last time that we came up here, I need to send the number, go look at your Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech wanted about $7 million back in the day to fix it. Now you've gone eight more years, and it's $12 million. Do you think it's getting cheaper? It's not. And you know what you can do today? You can enforce the standards. You can adopt them. Instead of just spending money and just having coalitions and all that, why don't you follow the comp plan and follow the adopted development order standards first, and then go fix what's already been damaged? But today, you should adopt these standards of this report, because the survey's correct, you picked it, I agree to it. And your issue about the next phases, without having an independent, and I don't mean our local guys, and you knew Harper was reporting here today, if you had engineering questions, you should have told your engineer to be here to answer them today while we're all here. But he's had plenty of chances. But about that today, from my house, yes, water sits in my yard. I got a 150-year-old oak broke over from water saturation, what's happened in the last three years. There've been four different type systems put in for my driveway that you can see. One's a closed pipe that goes nowhere, once the water fills in the drain, it goes nowhere. One, there was a pipe that y'all put in in one of your fixes, and the new house just dug it up and sloped the land to the north, and they, and the county signed off on that. There's been a track hoe out there privately with no permits, two or three weekends in a row. I've called and reported, I had to have the sheriff come stop him, he was out there digging in the ditch. There is no control, there's no code enforcement on the weekend. So what you have fixed, the planning department and building department signed off on digging back up, you know, water goes downhill. So no, I don't think you ought to do the two phases, I think you ought to get a complete answer, and most important, you ought to comply with the standard, not just talk about different issues. Adopt the standard that's in writing and enforce it, and that's the first step, is that admittance that somebody talked about earlier. Thank you.
Alan, Alan, I did ask for the engineer to be here, and the report has been out for three months, and I agree, I think that we should have someone from Walton County here to answer the questions, just like Dr. Harper, and he was only given five minutes. And I was told because his...
Excuse me, Ms. Nipper, Dr. Harper was given what he asked.
You're absolutely right.
He said his PowerPoint would take approximately 10 minutes, am I correct, Dr. Harper?
Well, the email that's in, I said, fine.
Well, the emails going back and forth said only five minutes, so I'll just revert to that.
I think Dr. Harper spoke for 13 minutes.
Perfect, and I do appreciate it, Dr. Harper, I really do. And I was told that because the report was out there, that we didn't need anyone from the county, and I do agree, we should, I think we should have someone here for the county, because according to Dr. Harper's report, it's a county issue.
Because if you spend a lot of money, Ms. Nipper, and you were installing something that was noncompliant, you know, we already, the homeowners, we paid over $3 million for you to put that system in that's 0% compliant, zero. And I know there's not many people left at Driftwood, but I've been out there since '97 in different places, and we paid that money to the county because they promised us they would make it comply, and it has zero compliance.
And from what I understand, Dr. Harper, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that this report is based on phase one and phase two being complete, is that correct?
No.
No, alright.
Survey was after then.
Attorney Heath, yes, and we will get the information regarding phase one and phase two from our engineers? That's what we agreed to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright, so then I do have one other question. Can we also get staff to explain that if we are not compliant by the DRI standards, if, what, where are we at with the Florida statutes then regarding DRIs? Do we have some guidance?
Sure, I mean, I can address that.
I have a statute right here, Ms. Nipper, I happen to have it in my package, it says right here, I have it printed out. And I'll answer your question, it says.
Excuse me, Ms. Harper, let Ms. Nipper, she was asking.
She asked me a question, Mr. Anderson.
Oh, she was looking at me.
I actually did ask Ms. Nipper.
Well, I would, I would read it for me if you would like, since I have it right here handy, and she doesn't. It said the local government, under Florida Statute 380.0617, issuing the development order, which y'all did out there, is primarily responsible for monitoring the development and enforcing all provisions of the development order. Local governments shall not issue permits or approvals or provide any extensions of servicers if the developer fails to act in substantial compliance with that development order. Thank you.
Thank you. So as far as the stormwater in Driftwood meeting the DRI standard, I'm, just to be clear, it was Dr. Harper's opinion in his report that what is designed out there does not meet the DRI standard. That is a position that's contrary to the position that the county has taken in many different forums over the years, so I would, you know, that's not necessarily settled, that's Dr. Harper's opinion, and we certainly take that under advisement. But what I will say is that regardless of whether or not it meets the DRI standard, I believe that Dr. Harper would even say that it would be impossible to make the stormwater in the interior and exterior of Driftwood meet the standard that he believes to be the DRI standard. We're talking about things that were developed, the exterior was developed 40 years ago, the interior was developed 15 years ago, you know, they've been sold to single-family homeowners. It's not possible at this point to meet the standard that Dr. Harper says of the DRI standard. And frankly, at this point, this is something that we have litigated extensively. Mr. Osborne had sued the county, and that is settled, and he resolved all of his claims against the county. The Greater Driftwood Homeowners' Association sued Walton County, and again, the issues in those lawsuits had to do with the DRI stormwater standard, that lawsuit was settled as well. We also had the compliance hearing in 2014. Mr. Heath and Mr. Osborne were present at that hearing and presented extensive evidence, and they argued at that time that Sandeston should be out of, found, found out of compliance due to the stormwater standard. The board heard that, decided not to find Sandeston out of compliance as to that issue. That was never appealed by Mr. Osborne or Mr. Heath. So it's, that, we addressed that as part of the compliance hearing, and the board chose not to accept that that was one of the basis that Sandeston was out of compliance. The board did find Sandeston out of compliance on a few other issues, and those were resolved in the NOPC hearing. So at this point, we have litigated this issue, and it's been resolved.
The stormwater's not resolved.
We have litigated the issue about whether or not the stormwater meets the DRI standard, and all of that litigation has been resolved.
Mr. Heath, you already spoke.
I disagree with many aspects of what you said.
Mr. Heath, please.
Okay, I do have a question for Dr. Harper. Sir, do you happen to have a, some type of projection? Because if we are waiting on Triumph Funds and TIF Funds, we need a timeline, or I would like to suggest or ask for a timeline from you as to when these need to be done, and if there is a priority or an order, and like, how many years should it take? When should we do the maintenance? When should we start this? It's not as, I, I just don't believe that we should wait until the Triumph Funds are available. I just think that's kicking the can down the road, and surely we've done that plenty.
We can go back and prioritize this and generate a new table for you, if you would like.
Okay, I would like to see that.
Oh, okay. Well, so, Dr. Harper has completed, I'm sorry, he's completed the work under his old contract, so if we were, had to have him do new work, we would need to execute a new contract for that. But I'm...
Alright, I would like to make a motion that we have Dr. Harper prioritize his findings and recommendations regarding maintenance and improvements, so that we can move forward with some type of plan that we know where we're going regarding the stormwater. If, if someone's willing to throw $10 million around on the table, I think the people, I think we all deserve, taxpayers deserve to know where it's going. Triumph Funds just don't come out of the air, that's still taxpayer dollars. I make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Would you consider amending that motion to forming a working group to examine this comprised of Scott Keraway, the environmental, one of our engineers at the choice of Mr. Stafford?
Based on this report, I do not, I think, I think we're best, just like we do with Dr. Harper, and the special magistrate said it as an outside source. I think this needs to be done outside our house.
Who do you suggest?
RFQ, Dr. Harper, I think it just needs to be outside of us. This has been going on too long. This report states issues that we have within Driftwood, within Sandeston, everything that we've got going on.
I, I'm, but I think...
I don't agree that this should be in-house.
I'm not saying in-house.
Scott Keraway is in-house.
Well, but that's part of, but maybe some citizens say, Dr. Crane from Sandeston, maybe ask Freeport, provide a representative, ask Commissioner Nick, because that's his district, to be, be the chairman, and, or if he wants to have one of his aides be the chairman, Mr. Vatsen, maybe, and let them study, and come back with a recommendation, because I, I think, I'm not real comfortable with throwing our own engineers under the bus without, just as, without studying a little bit. Would you, could we amend the motion to that?
I want these recommendations, improvements, and maintenance procedures, part of that.
Well, they would be studying those, I mean, bringing us back a recommendation as to how to apply those.
Can you give me a timeline? Because every ti, we need a timeline.
How about three months? That would give them a chance to meet, meet with Dr. Harper.
Are we going to be able to meet with Dr. Harper, even though his...
Would you, I mean, he's still...
Conference call, I, I don't know, or do we have to go through?
I mean, that's something I can, I can discuss that with Dr. Harper, and then get a cost estimate if you guys would like.
I still think he's a resident expert regarding the prioritization of these projects and the timeline.
But, I understand, but I think... But, I understand, but I think Dr. Crane maybe, or Mr. Isley, one of those guys from Sand Dustin, to provide citizen comment. I think somebody from the North Shore and maybe that would be a Freeport, or maybe one of the other commissioners.
I don't mind a recommendation, but Dr. Harper's a resident expert. He, we hired him. It's his recommendations, can he please just prioritize them? He's just doing, I'm just asking, we can't lump, I can't see lumping down $11.7 million. I'm asking for a prioritization and a timeline of getting these things done because one thing has got to work with another.
I mean, I-
It's just how I see it, working on-
I don't want to speak out loud, but I will. You know, the Driftwood Homeowners Association Board would be very willing. Why is your name, please? Patricia Witbeck, and I'm the president.
Ma'am, Ms. Witbeck, could you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Yep. Hello, my name is Patricia Witbeck. I live in Driftwood and I am the president of the Greater Driftwood Homeowners Association. And we would certainly be willing to pay for Dr. Harper to do this additional report.
Is there a conflict of interest in any way? Sidney?
I'm sorry?
I apologize, is there a conflict of interest in any way if Driftwood Homeowners Association?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what it is that we're trying, what the motion was or what the request was. If it's for Dr. Harper to just give us a timeline or a timeframe or-
Well, you said, you said his-
His contract.
His contract is done. So I'm asking for his technical expertise to move forward.
To design the project or?
To prioritize the improvements and the maintenance that cost 11.2 or $7 million. And 2.5 maintenance, how often we should do it? What's the priority? Should we buy property first? Should we do the outfall first? We don't know, we're not the technical experts.
And I don't know, I'm not an engineer, of course, but I mean, I think that would require some sort of designing of the projects. I don't know, I don't under-
Can you add clarity to what you think, maybe what's being added?
Well, and Mr. Heath, you know, we agreed at the beginning that we weren't going to-
Okay, I'll then allow Dr. Harper to-
Mr. Heath.
Can you please clarify?
Please, you've had your turn, please, please return to your seat and we'll ask the question to Dr. Harper.
I'm not sure if your request for prioritization was for the maintenance issues or the fix, the-
Both.
Both.
Because if, if we're willing to talk about $10 million up here, that's almost going to solve the problem. How often do we need maintenance? I guess what I would like is a prioritize, and I'm sure the public would like to see, a prioritization of the list of the projects and improvements that you had, that you've suggested, the maintenance procedures, how often we should have them. And really, honestly, to see if Phase 1 and Phase 2 have worked.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Nipper, you just indicated $10 million that'd be put right out there at Driftwood. Well, there's other places in the county on Chalktahatchee Bay that some of that $10 million needs to be applied to. Septic systems in Black Creek, Philatasso, Chalktow. You can't devote the whole $10 million that we're trying to get through there to put in there.
Mentioned by Commissioner Nick is the only reason I use that number, of $10 million Triumph Dollars.
Let me take a shot just from clarity. The earlier motion was to, for staff to begin the process of looking at Pot 3 and procuring $10 million of that pot for the betterment of Chalktahatchee Bay, including the report from Dr. Harper and other information that we will gather through whatever process this board would deem appropriate. What you're, if I understand what you're asking, Commissioner, is this list, and I believe the slide before this list had a list of things. Your, is your request, give us some comments to hear to say, if you do nothing else, do this first.
Absolutely.
If you, you know, once you complete that, this should be the next priority item to move forward on. From there, this one, because if I look at it, the, the, the projects are already listed out. There's an estimated cost. So what, if I understand what you're asking for is simply a prioritization of those cat, those projects so that in, in, in the bigger process, Project 1 would be the first thing we look at. And as funding is available and the things that are going on now through Public Works and through the TIF funding, that, so that may be, may better be redirected into the first project on his list. Is that an understanding?
It is, but I'd also like to ask Dr. Harper if we could also prioritize, 2022 would be where, no later than, we start Project Number 1. Because I, I just don't want it, we've been talking about BP funds and, and everything else to make this work. And I just want to make sure that not only do we have a list of priorities, how often we should have this maintenance, but a timeline where it's cost-effective and efficient.
So what I would suggest, because I, you know, Dr. Harper would obviously have to, you know, come up with a plan and a cost estimate. If you guys give me direction, I could speak with him and develop that and bring it back to you at a later time for you to consider. I, I would-
Charlie has been working on-
Yes.
On this and-
That's correct, and Charlie is a certified engineer.
It works for us.
Correct.
I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish here. I mean, Charlie's already working on this plan.
Right.
And he's got a license too. And he says this is-
That's ignoring these improvements in maintenance procedures. That's, that's ignoring this.
That's, one of the questions I wanted to ask Dr. Harper was is when this data was actually received, as far as-
Wait, excuse me, just a second. Dr. Harper, you said this data did not include Stage 1 and 2, right?
That's correct.
So, so you-
We don't know.
We don't know if it's working or not.
That's correct, we have not analyzed anything to do with the Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Sir, Dr. Harper, when did you do the modeling? What was the date of your modeling?
The modeling was conducted last summer and fall.
Last summer and fall is June?
June through September, October.
Is anyone here that knows if Phase 1 and Phase 2 have been completed in that time?
Look, let me just comment on that, that we did not know that, that there was any improvements being undertaken until midsummer of last year. And we found out by accident. We, we were not notified by the county that this was-
So that's sort of why I was wanting to go towards a working group that it would include some citizens, you know, Ms., I can't remember. Maybe Dr. Crane from Sand Dustin. And, and our engineer, somebody from, because this is Commissioner Nick's district. So he needs to be involved, either him or his aide.
I'll have my aide.
Yeah, it affects the whole county.
Yeah, it does affect the whole county.
But it's still-
Throw, throw a thought. We do have qualified staff that I believe can do some of the things we're looking for. Why don't we ask them to do exactly what you've asked? Put a prob, take this list, prioritize it, look at timeframes of what's in the progress and when we could get started on it. And then have Dr. Harper review that, just make any comments or changes that he would see. That, that may get us through.
Dr. Harper, would that be, would that be sufficient and make you feel comfortable? Because you're going to put your stamp, like I got to put my landing gear down, I'm a pilot. You're going to put your stamp on this when we hand it to you. Are you willing to do that in this situation?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so, so you want to change your motion to have, include Ms. Noyes and Dr. Harper?
Well, no, I think it was, I think it was our engineer.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm getting to that. The first part is to get him paid, because I know he doesn't want to do this for free.
Well, so I, I, I'm sorry to interject at this thing. I, I think if Dr. Harper's just reviewing the work that our engineers do, the prioritization, we can, I assume that that-
Professional services.
Would be covered under our professional services, under the Public Works budget.
So-
Is, is that with the assumption that we're accepting this report and these recommendations? Or is that a separate motion before we even move forward and ask Dr. Harper for his assistance? Do we need to, did we have accepted, was it via a motion?
It is what it is.
Alright.
Well, what we would take it is to take these, I think it's the last two pages of your presentation, as individual projects, prioritize them, add comments to them, dates if that's appropriate, send that to Dr. Harper for his review and additional comments. Bring that back to the board and say, this is what we've come to.
Okay, then I guess I need to step this back. Then the first thing I need to do is make a motion to accept Dr. Harper's report and its recommendations.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to accept your report.
You have a roll of calls so you, so you can get.
Alright, Danny?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ah, you got it.
Aye. Nate? No.
Alright, so, so the, the, the next part of that motion was to have our staff prioritize the list, the last two pages, and then get with Dr. Harper and have him review that and make recommendations from there.
Including a timeline. I'm holding to it.
Is that the motion?
That's my motion.
Alright.
I already second it. I'll, I'll continue.
All, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Harper.
Thank you, Dr. Harper, we appreciate it. That will wrap it up. We've, we've done this motion, thank y'all for your comments.
The reason why I wanted to come up and say a couple of things is Ms. Noyes referred to the litigation having been settled between the Homeowners Association and the county. And that is true. And I want to point out to all of you, though, that we want very much to work with the county and with the commissioners on resolving this issue out in Driftwood. We're not here to resist your decisions, we want to work with you. And that was one reason why, when the, you're, you mentioned, Mr. Gladwell, the five-phase program that they started last summer that Dr. Harper just implied he knew nothing about. We didn't know about it either until they were in the process of doing it. We sincerely appreciate that effort. We have been, we have learned through the grapevine, though, that there was some consideration being given to discontinuing that phased system. And that's one reason why we are here today.
Do you, are you happy with what's been done so far?
We are happy with what's been done. It's not satisfying the runoff into the bay and that is, sounds like it's a county-wide project that needs to be dealt with. And it needs to be dealt with in Driftwood and as part of the Sand Dustin DRI. But we are happy with that project and we've worked well with the entire department. However, I'm a little, I'm feeling a little misled here by Ms. Noyes when she said they don't, you don't have to enforce the recommendations of Dr. Harper because of the build-out that's occurred. And I guess I want some, I would like to have some clarification is, did your motion just now accept the recommendation of Harper and the printed report?
We, we accepted his report.
But you didn't accept the recommendations in his report.
Yes, I did, I said that.
Well, then that's my point. It conflicts with what Ms. Noyes said in that she said, "We don't have to do anything in the Harper report."
If I may, if I may-
Please.
What Ms. Noyes said was pre-vote, now we vote, so.
Okay.
But I, my, my goal in, in asking the questions is, my understanding was, is that the residents, your, your group was happy with what was being done. So I want to make sure that don't get thrown.
No, and-
We don't want to throw the baby out with the bath.
That's, that's one of our concerns, is that we're going to get thrown under the bus-
No, ma'am.
With that. And also, this meeting started out with a lot of talk about $10 million. You know, that's a, can be made available to this entire county, you know, for work that needs to be done to save the bay. And obviously, it sounded to us like perhaps some of that would go to Driftwood.
Well, my underst, my understanding of how we need to proceed is we've got a project that, that we're already underway right now with, with your, in your neighborhood that two phases out of the five have been done. And, and that y'all are happy with. We're going to finish that. That's, that's the, as far as I'm concerned, this is me talking. But we're, as long as y'all are happy, you know, and we're going to keep trying to, as Commissioner Chapman pointed out in this whole discussion, that $10 million is a, for the bay.
I understand that.
And there are a lot of different facets to the bay, probably. We've got a water quality problem in the bay.
I, county-wise.
Septic tanks-
I understand that.
So, but of course, you know, the septic systems on the North Shore, that's a problem. Sand Dustin is a whole different problem. Hogtown Bio is a problem. There's, there's several different issues. If, if we need some of that money for Driftwood, I'm sure as the board seems to be in the direction, we would spend that. But right now, y'all are, y'all already got one project and we're going to keep that going. Because as long as you're happy.
Yeah.
So Ms. Noyes was not disagreeing with that. We were, the board has just voted to go forward.
I was, I was just asked about the DRI standard. That was only one facet of Dr. Harper's report.
Right, well, obviously, the, the entire, the bay and the runoff from Driftwood is a major problem still. You know, and it really must be addressed.
We've got, we've got a lot of runoff problems.
Yeah, there's a lot of work to do.
Yeah, no.
And I agree, this has been going on now for 15 years. And I remember when Tetra Tech stood up here and offered a plan for $7 million. And now today, it's $12 million.
We're, we're, none of us that are up here right now are on that board.
I see some familiar faces. I, I see, I see a couple of familiar faces.
He's a hard face to forget.
Yeah, okay.
Anyhow, that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Ma'am, thank you. Sir, you'll be next. We have already voted on this issue, we've already taken action. But if you have a comment, make it quick, okay?
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time to be up here. My name is Don Crane, I'm the Dr. Crane that my friend Danny Gladwell referred to. Thank you for volunteering me for something that I didn't agree to.
You're in.
But, let me say this, I am very proud of you folks up here for the vote that you took on Melanie's proposal. I lost $100 because I didn't think you'd do it. But you did it and I, and I appreciate it. However, I do take issue with one of the things that was said. And that is, the DRI standard is not being met. Even though it's supposedly already been litigated, that doesn't mean it can't be litigated again. And the DRI standard needs to be met throughout Sand Dustin. And we've got problems in Sand Dustin. So, you know, you can, you can say what you want, but you've got one lawyer that can say one thing. I can find another lawyer right down the street that'll say something else. Another thing, as far as this committee, I'd be happy to serve on any committee, so long as it is effective. If it's wind addressing, I'm not going to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson, your group has already spoken.
I'm not speaking for that group, I'm speaking for-
No, I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry.
Our policies preclude members from the group from speaking.
I'm not a member.
You're not a member of the taxpayer association.
You're not the executive group.
I am the executive director, but I am not a member of that board. And all I wanna say is, anything you discuss about the bay and committees should include someone from South Walton and Mesquite Control District because one of the major conveyors of pollution to the bay are those ditches.
My name is Frank Michel, and I'm a resident of Driftwood Estates, and I'd like to make a couple of points about the work that was done earlier or later last year. That work that's being put in, I don't believe meets the requirements of Dr. Harper's conceptual design for what he was doing. What that actually does is it goes ahead and collects all of the chemicals off the front of the yards and puts it directly into the lake with no treatment whatsoever. That includes the biocides, the fertilizer, and the insecticides. I'm not aware of any treatment on anything coming out of that. It doesn't retain nor detain. It's just a fast ticket right out into the bay. And I don't think that's correct, and I think that needs to be looked into. And whatever is done with this, I think really does need to be in direct compliance with what Dr. Harper has recommended as opposed to what has already been done. Because what's been done, I don't believe is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Dana Matthews. I wasn't gonna say anything until Mr. Crane got up, and I felt compelled to, um, speak in, following up on what some of the comments Ms. Nois made. First of all, I don't know if you've read Dr. Harper's report. It's over seven hundred pages of narrative and, and appendixes. But I've gone through the salient points and looking where any, any time that Sandeston was mentioned. I think it was five times. I'm not taking issue with him in terms of his analysis, what he did, when he did it, versus whether or not he knew that the five-phase project that's going on now, that nobody is here to speak on to talk about whether or not takes into consideration his recommendations or not. That's not my point. My point is, is that when somebody, when Mr. Crane says that his report deals with Sandeston, his report doesn't deal with Sandeston. He studied, his study area was in the Driftwood Estates. He was very clear in, in his presentation on that. Whether it meets the DRI standard in nineteen seventy-four or not is not the issue here. The issue I have, and it was when I read the report, is if anything was gonna be said today to try to hold Sandeston in non-compliance and therefore shut down development in Sandeston again. I wanna make it very clear, and I've made this clear to, to Ms. Nois and Mr. Jones, that I spent five years of my life litigating with the Driftwood Association, with SOA, other owners out there, this county, and we spent, had multiple public hearings where Sandeston was found in non-compliance way back in two thousand and twelve or thirteen. I can't even remember when it was. And, and we spent years after litigation and going through NOPCs twice, including litigation in Flawak and, and Tallahassee. And was all sudden done, the issues of this retention, detentions, DRI standard at Driftwood has been vetted and litigated, and, and discussed with the consultants of Mr. Heath, Mr. Osborne, and all their consultants during these, these processes, and the county has approved the NOPC. And then we got sued, and we came back and had an amended NOPC, as y'all recall. These issues have been resolved. There's, there's a form. If they, if anybody wanted to object to these things that the county did the last time they approved the NOPC, and I think it was November of seventeen, they had thirty days in which to file a lawsuit with Flawak, and that didn't happen. So as far as we're concerned, my client has no, other than, uh, Driftwood being part of Sandeston DRI, my client didn't put in the stormwater out there. Those are other developers that, that, that bought that land, and they put those stormwater systems in. They got the platting approved. They built the lots. They constructed it. They designed it. The county approved it. And whatever the conditions are today are what they are, and if they need to be fixed, I understand these people's concerns. But that's not Sandeston as a resort or Tomback Now or Sandeston Investments obligation to have to fix it. We're not part of any of this. So I, 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 you know, I, I, I thought Mr. Bagby was a great presenter at the very beginning, could've kinda laid it all out. And I like the, the, the approach that, that this commission is taking, as workshopping, if you will, through the best professional experts that you have, including your own staff that you should not ignore, that you pay a lot of money for, and to try to help come up with these recommendations and the prioritizations for fixing in the future. But the issue is a lot bigger than the Driftwood Estates. It is the Choctawatch Bay, and, and I applaud you for your efforts today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fletcher.
Phil Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R. One second. Dr. Crane, uh, thank you for doing this. I watched this thing kicked around for at least a dozen years, and to see finally some progress made. You've spent a lot of money on an expert, and I think it's great that you're gonna take advantage of that, that study. It's, I've, I've seen it. It looked very comprehensive. And you talk about ten and twelve million dollars. Folks, if you had to spend fifty million, that has to be fixed. If you kill that bay, the economic impact on this county will be just astronomical. And I would also like to ask, the, the Driftwood standards, drainage standards, what are those? Are those being followed now? Yeah, listen.
It was approved, um, well, the original, the exterior was approved in nineteen seventy-nine, so that would've predated any.
Well, from what?
The interior, uh, met a standard and was constructed according to that standard.
Well, from a lot of what I've heard tonight and looked at in reports, that enforcement is, is a key problem here. You're just not enforcing these standards like they should be. So I think that's something you can obviously change immediately, if not sooner. The other thing is, I think Commissioner Nipper mentioned it, is the, uh, development. We gotta look at developments that we're approving and look at the impact in much greater detail of what we've been doing in the past. But again, I thank you so much for what you've done.
Okay, moving forward. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is, uh, regarding the Walton County, uh, Walton County School District and a request approval to hold a special election for the half-mill referendum. And, uh, Ms. Stephanie Hoffhines? I'm sorry. Your mic's not on.
Uh, got it now. This is, uh, this Hoffhine, Hoffhines, is that close? This is here on behalf of the school district to request to the board, um, a resolution to hold their half-cent cell-stank referendum in May, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Stephanie, I'm not gonna tempt your name. Let's wait till the, these people clear the room so.
Okay, yes, sir.
We won't be disturbed. And welcome to Walton County.
Thank you.
You're not from Walton County?
I'm originally from Liberty County.
Oh, that's all right.
Very small county.
Yeah.
Between Panama City and Tallahassee.
Bristol.
Yes.
Scary bridge.
Okay, if you would go ahead, please.
Okay. Hi, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Again, my name is Stephanie Hoffhines. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the School District in Walton County. I'm here on behalf of Superintendent Hughes and our school board to request that you guys approve, and ladies, approve a special election for the half-mill referendum. This has been in place for sixteen years, so we're simply asking a continuation of this. This is not an increase to taxes. The constituents of this county have allowed this to be in place for the last sixteen years, and it has allowed us to continue to be an epic school district and maintain a standard of excellence that we would like to see achieved in the future. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those.
Go ahead.
Ms. Stephanie, um, is this part of the half-mill that about every five years you take it from one pot and put it in another pot?
Yes, sir. That is exactly right.
In this pot it's going into one. What are you gonna use this half-mill for, this?
The half-mill, uh, will be for operating purposes, so it'll be for, um, to continue the programs that we have with the school district. Of course, for extracurricular, it could be state-of-the-art computers, um, run the gamut, to provide competitive salaries, um, to provide programs that will continue to keep our school district an A-plus school district.
But it's not an additional half-mill on the taxes?
It is not an addition.
I just may, I know it ain't, but I just wanna make.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Our board made that commitment back in two thousand and four, when this was first done, to keep our capital outlay tax neutral at one point three nine three mils, and we have continued to do that, and will continue to do so.
Do you have a date for this?
May seventh.
May seventh.
Okay.
And I've been working with Mr. Bobby Beasley on that.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Bob?
Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to ask my couple of questions. First of all, this seems to recur every year at an expense of, I don't know, Bobby Beasley tells me it's about thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars to run a special election. Isn't there some way, I mean, the county school system must budget for this each year. Can't they do this, if they have to do it by mechanism of a special election, can't they do this by scheduling in advance the next election at Bobby Beasley's or the, the election prior to the time they need this to have taken place? Can't they schedule this item on that ballot rather than spend thirty-five thousand dollars of the school board's money?
Let me ask this of Ms. Stephanie. This proposal today, there wasn't a previous one unless it was five years ago. Is that correct? Four years ago?
Forty-two years.
It's every four years, so it's every four years this comes up. Now, whether or not it's at a general election, I don't know, but.
I mean, there's no requirement that it be a special election to get this on a ballot, is there?
Bob, Bob, that's an issue you need to take up with the school board. They're the ones that decide that, not us.
But, but you approve it to happen every year, or every four years?
Their date, but if you wanna bring that part up with them, yeah, I would recommend that you do that. Or talk to Mr. Hughes about that. Okay?
Okay, I will do that, but I would, I would ask that you consider, in the future, if this comes up again, not approving this because there is an alternative that saves money and can be devoted to the actual functions of the schools and the school system rather than going for elections. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Does the school board pay for this?
It does.
Okay.
And let me say this to you. This is my first term, second, uh, second year. This has been the practice for the district. And of course, keeping with the practice, I certainly don't wanna risk, uh, it not being the case. Many districts are now, uh, copying and doing the things we're doing as far as referendum because we've been so responsible with it. So this has been the practice prior to my, uh, coming into, uh, superintendency, so I wanted to keep it that way this year. And certainly, um, anytime, we'll talk about this, and we'll talk to you all about it whenever to make sure that we're, we're taking care of our children. And, uh, I think I have proof to show that we have done responsibly, and will continue to do so. These additions, again, with these programs, gives us the ability to keep the extracurricular opportunities with our strong tax base, and we certainly thank our constituents for overwhelmingly voting for this each time it's been the case. And we commit to continue to be responsible with those funds and make sure we have the fund balance we do to, uh, to be responsible, uh, fiscally, uh, for what we're doing here. Absolutely. I'll be glad to talk to you all about this on the next time. It's, again, it's come up, I mean, my second term, and, uh, I wanna make sure that we're, we're keeping everything consistent. And I'll consider those other things next time. That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you so much.
Call question.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're gonna take about a fifteen or twenty-minute break, so be back here about six oh five.
Mister's next item before you is a request. Thank you. There we go. Commissioners, next item is a request to reschedule March twenty-eighth land use, uh, hearing due to the Florida Association of Counties Legislative Day that is in conflict with that, and we are asking to change that, uh, to either Tuesday, March nineteenth, Thursday, March twenty-first, or to combine the two and have one meeting on Tuesday, March the nineteenth.
What's the board's wishes?
What's the day again? Hang on, my age telling me no.
Twenty-sixth is, uh, a regular board meeting. Could we not do that, uh, after a regular scheduled board meeting on the twenty-sixth?
Yes, sir, we can.
If you'd like to do that. Gotta be there anyway, so. I'd make a motion, we just move it to, uh, the twenty-sixth of March, Tuesday, at the nine AM BCC meeting in the Phoenix.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Motion carried.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
Next item is, um, a request to reschedule the April twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen land use hearing due to early voting, uh, in the school board election. And we're suggesting we move that to Monday, the twenty-third of April.
The twenty-third?
Our Tuesday, the twenty-third, excuse me. After the BCC meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-third.
They're not gonna be using that room that whole week for early voting?
Not, not that day.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioners, next item, um, is a request to award, um, invitation to bid zero one nine dash zero zero three for security monitoring services. This is a rebid, um, probably a couple of times, uh, to the sole bidder, which was Siemens Industry, and approved and authorized the chair to execute the agreement. We believe that they're, uh, while they were the sole bidder, they were certainly qualified. They met all the special requirements, and we believe their pricing is in line with industry standards, so we would recommend moving that forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, next item is request award RFQ zero one nine dash zero zero six and begin negotiation with Jones Edmonds and Associates for Engineering Services for the Florida Department of Environmental Land, uh, Protection Landfill Permit Compliance Monitoring and Reporting Groundwater and Surface Water Quality Landfill Gas Management and Groundwater Remediation System. This is, uh, monitoring that is, that takes place in conjunction with our DEP, uh, solid waste permit at landfill. These are requirements that, uh, between, uh, landfill staff and outside engineering we've been performing. We feel like we'd be better served by having them all done, um, through one, um, firm, and Jones Edmonds, uh, was the, uh, most qualified and selected as the firm to negotiate with, and we're just asking your permission to begin those negotiations.
Motion to award the RFQ zero one nine zero zero six and begin negotiation with Jones Edmonds for the monitoring at the landfill.
Second.
Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Next item is a request for your approval to submit projects to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Project Portal for Consideration of Restore Council and two thousand and nineteen, uh, GEBF funding. There are two, three, uh, versions of funding listed there in your, in your, uh, board book. DEP now has a portal for which they must be submitted through in order to be considered. You will see a list. Um, you will see a list of, of projects there in your board packet. First is water quality improvements to the coastal Dune Lakes and Chocahatchie Bay through Septic Tank Conversions, which goes right along with our earlier discussion, uh, Lake Jackson Park improvements, Natural Bridge, Natural Bridge Spring Preservation and the Chocahatchee River Paddle Trail. All your action today will do will do to take those four projects and to insert them into the DEP portal that makes them available for funding through various sundry processes. But in order to capture any of those funds, this is the first step, so we would, um, recommend your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Gates for including Jack's, Lake Jackson and Natural Bridge in this, I appreciate it.
Any discussion from the audience, Bob?
Bob Brook, uh, Mr. Chairman, just a question. I know in the past with Restore Act projects, they were prioritized and reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners. Have these been reviewed and prioritized?
Uh, these are not in particular or specifically Restore Act projects. Getting into the portal, um, they have the potential to be Restore Act projects and if they, indeed they do, they would be pot one projects which would go through the pot one process. Um, secondarily, it makes them available for NFWIP and some other funding opportunities.
Okay, have they been?
But at this point, the answer to your question is no.
Have they been reviewed by the, the Restore Act Citizens Committee?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
These are, these are projects that are being submitted by the county?
Let me.
I mean, they're county initiated.
But if you give me a chance, try again. Uh, we are asking the board for permission to put these projects into the DEP funding portal. Uh, they're, they haven't been developed as projects, we're not specifically requesting particular funds, but in order to get to that point, they have to be in this, uh, DEP portal. As we move through some, perhaps we'll go through pot one, uh, restore process, some may be NFWIP projects, some may be funded through some other means and mechanism, but as we begin to identify and narrow the scope of those proj, uh, the funding sources, we will know they're in the right place in DEP in order for the funding to be set forth.
Okay, but like, are they projects that are initiated by the county as opposed to some outside?
Yes.
Thank you.
What's the board's wishes?
And, and, Mr. Chairman, if may I add one thing, on the February twenty-seventh, we would like to have a ribbon cutting, grand opening of sorts to the, the planning department and the county facilities at the, uh, location in Freeport. So we've, uh.
What, what date is that?
Uh, February twenty-seventh.
Correct.
At nine AM. With your support and we will get it on our radar.
Can we vote on that?
We have a motion and a second on this.
Are we on a motion and a second?
We got a motion and a second on the, on the previous public works.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have not.
Not voted, but there is a motion.
Motion second.
Yeah, serious, my Mr. Bligh and Mr. Nick. What's the board's wishes? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, now Larry, since you jumped the gun. You have that, we have that down, we don't need, we don't need a vote.
Did you just vote for everything then?
And the twenty-seventh.
You just got us all confused.
Okay.
All right.
And the.
Is that it?
Uh, it is, uh, however, Commissioner Gladwell had mentioned one thing that we forgot to get on the agenda even under his name regarding some testing for the bay. If you would indulge us, allow him to make that presentation, Mr. Chairman, and get that vote done.
It was my motion about the whole water, um, it's, I'd just like to ask or give, uh, Public Works, Mr. Careyway, Ms. Gates, the, uh, or ask them to bring us back a proposal for a consultant to, uh, do specific water testing at several points along the bay that they've identified, one would be Eagle Creek, uh, one would be, uh, McDaniel's, one would be, uh, there at the outfall at, the two of the outfalls at, uh, Sand, at, uh, Driftwood and one in Haltown Bio to, they have, there's a, a mechanism called an auto sampler that you can put in those places and it would, it does a lot better, it's an automatic sampling system, uh, about seventeen hundred dollars for three or four month period for each one. But just ask them to bring us back a proposal, uh, to, uh, do that sampling, so we'll have specific data, particularly making sure that our, that, that our new projects there along to, uh, Driftwood are working, are, are performing better than the old, the other side that's not been done yet and the septic systems at Eagle Creek, um, particularly and McDaniel's. So just asking the, ask the staff to bring us back.
We just need to direct staff to do that.
Uh, they probably do it if we have a motion.
I made that motion.
All right.
So, okay, I got a question. Is Ms. Gates out there?
I think she left.
She was standing at the door. Melinda, you out there?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Melinda, my question is, at one time, the CBA was taking random samples all along the, the, the bay. Are they still doing that?
Yes, sir, they do have quite a few sampling sites all throughout the day.
Okay, but we don't know exactly if they're in reference to the areas that we're talking about or can we find out where they are?
I can look into that.
And, and I think part of what the Commissioners are saying is these are, they're stationary and they, uh, every twenty-four hours or on certain timeframes where they check.
Auto samplers.
So that gives you a specific point of data over a period of time measured at.
It's more specific.
Specific area.
And to my knowledge, also, the auto samplers are set up at outfalls, so they're set up to be triggered per rainfall, so you get so much rainfall and flow through it and then it'll cut on and then it can read however frequently you want, so it could be twenty minutes, hour, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but with, uh, your approval, then Melinda and, and environmental staff have worked to establish those points as mentioned and bring us back a cost and, uh, the appropriate means to, uh, put those auto samplers in place. Thank you, Melinda.
Any more discussion with the board? Any discussion with the audience?
Bob Brook, Mr. Chairman, are the five sites, I believe it's Commissioner, Commissioner Gladwell mentioned five sites for locating these, is that an adequate survey to determine what the health of the bay is baywide? Or should there, should there be more or should there be some sort of a plan laid out as to where this, where these sensors ought to be located to collect the data to give you a good characterization of the health of the bay and where the damage is coming from?
My understanding from, from, uh, talking to the CBA the other week is they have several sampling systems in the middle of the bay and at specific places and then up the river. And, uh, those have a, there's those, some of those date back to two thousand, two thousand and one, so there's a significant amount of data there, but these are, are about specific outfalls. The one at Eagle Creek, they mentioned, um, that is a specific concern, the, uh, the two at Driftwood, but, uh, those would provide specific data, a lot more timely data and would give us an idea of those specific spots. I don't know that, I mean, you could put a lot more out there, but it was trying to be cognizant of taxpayers' money and just do five or six right now and see how it is, see what, what that data shows us over a, a period of time and then we'll, we'll know better where we need to go from there.
So, so they complement the CBA data or vice versa, their data would complement this?
This is to complement and sup, and supplement the data we already have.
Who, who gets the data and who does the analysis?
Uh, our, uh, environmental staff, Mr. Careyway and Ms. Gates would get that at Public Works.
Great, thank you, I applaud you for doing this.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Okay, is that it for you?
That's it for me.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I thought since we're talking about some, uh, properties here that relate to each other, what I would do is read off the two agenda items related to those two items and then we can just kind of discuss them comparatively, that might be the best way to go. Um, Sidney, do you have, I think that might work?
Yeah, that, uh, if that's acceptable to the board, but I think the idea was, um, that we would look at both of these and then make a decision one way or another, so it would probably be best to discuss them together.
Okay, well, for the record, I'll read off both these agenda items and then we can, I'll, I can kind of just give you a little background on where we are with the prices and then just some logistical, um, with the parking spots and stuff like that, so let me just read these, they'll be lengthy, so pardon me. Uh, so number thirty-seven, update and request direction on Leisure Lane properties and consider approval of the purchase agreements, uh, for parcel number zero two three S two zero three four one six zero dash zero 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 dash zero four two zero. The next parcel number is zero two dash three S dash two zero dash three four one six zero dash zero 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 dash zero four two two. The next number is zero two dash three S, three S dash two zero dash three four one six zero dash zero 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 dash zero four seven two. And lastly, for this one, zero two dash three S dash, dash, two zero dash three four one six zero dash zero 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 dash zero four seven zero. Man, that's a mouthful. And the next item is number thirty-eight, request, update and request direction on Highway three, uh, ninety-three South property and consider approval of the purchase agreement and that parcel number is zero three, three S dash two zero dash three four zero 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 dash zero two two dash zero three two zero. Okay, now that we got all, all the way, uh, I will just kind of walk through real quick. Um, so the last meeting, um, I had done a little bit of pre-negotiating with the folks on Leisure Lane and so, uh, went back to them and, uh, did a little bit more negotiating. So, uh, right now, the price for that is at the negotiated, uh, I'm sorry, at the, uh, average appraised value, which is three million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, now, with that said, that's the overall price for all four parcels. One of the parcels, uh, forty-four Leisure Lane, is over appraised value by ninety-five thousand dollars. So if the board wished to move forward with this, it would, that property parcel would require a super majority vote of the board, so I just wanted to make that clear where we were on that. Um, and in contrast, the, uh, three ninety-three property, uh, I negotiated the price on that for the average appraised value of three point seven million dollars. So that's kind of where we are with the prices, so let me just kind of walk you through with the parking. So, um, we included in your board packets and it requires a little explanation, this is something that Chance Powell drew up, but the parking spots are not apples to apples, they're kind of apples to oranges, so I wanted to kind of explain it to you so we can get apples to apples. So for the, uh, Leisure Lane parcels, Chance came up with a diagram and you can see it in your books and you can see it there, and so there's a hundred and fifteen spots for this parcel. Um, and so this includes underground stormwater, so that is a hundred and fifteen spots. Now, with that said, a couple of things to note, um, part of the advantage to this property is that the street is being incorporated, Leisure Lane is being incorporated into the design that we can work with the parking, so you can kind of see, there's one kind of going, uh, north and that has two kind of bays, parking bays off of it, and then it loops back around south and that's Leisure Lane and then we have parking there. So through the Leisure Lane parcels right now, there's technically one driveway because the other one is a street that's not part of the parcels. So I just kind of wanted to explain that. Now, in contrast, where we are with the three ninety-three properties, when Chance designed that, he put a pond on there instead of underground stormwater. And so I said, hey, this isn't kind of comparative apple to apple, I said, where would we be if we did underground stormwater? And he said, in contrast of having, instead of having a hundred and twenty spots, we would have a hundred and fifty spots. So just to compare it, if we have underground stormwater, we'd have a hundred and fifty spots on three ninety-three and on Leisure Lane, we'd have a hundred and fifteen. So I just wanted to be clear so that we're kind of comparing number of parking spots to comparable number of parking spots. So is everybody clear on that?
Thank you.
Okay, great, just wanted to make sure that we were good on that. Um, so that's kind of where we are. Um, you know, I think there's some advantages to both these properties. Um, obviously Leisure Lane is, uh, closer to Edwaleen and to North Spooky Lane, uh, where we have our, uh, I'm sorry, South Spooky Lane, where we have our beach access and the Shell Seekers Cove. So, uh, if the board sees fit that they want to try to have some access, uh, or greater access to that property that we own over there, um, you know, you may want to take a look at this property, uh, for that consideration. However, if we want something larger, uh, and we want something for future growth, uh, where we could put a parking garage, and let's be clear right now, we're not talking about a parking garage at this point, we're just saying in the future, if one would be needed, we would have the opportunity to do that on the three ninety-three property. We would not have that, uh, option on the Leisure Lane properties. So that, that's kind of where we are right now with everything.
Can I ask?
Sure.
On this, uh, there, there's a little, uh, narrow space between one B and two and after our groundbreaking today, I went out there and, uh, it's fenced, it's got a lot of, who owns that?
So that is an easement, uh, for the property owners, you can kind of see that development on thirty A there, so that is easement for them. So we can, we can cross it, we'd leave a driveway there for, if we were to purchase that, we'd leave a driveway there for those folks and we would continue with the parking, uh, above it and below it.
I think Chance's design shows the driveway.
It does, so when Chance is designing for the parking, um, you can see there, let me find it in here.
Kind of in the middle.
Yeah, you can see in the middle, he's allowed that access for that property.
So that's a, that's just an easement and, okay.
Correct.
As long as we didn't block the easement and still allow them to use it as it was originally intended, it wouldn't be a problem.
So as, when I'm running the numbers, it looks like, uh, the difference is thirty-seven percent, if we're talking square foot for square foot and that's not even the difference between thirty-five parking spots, the price of Leisure Lane is thirty-seven percent more per square foot.
Mm-hmm.
And we're talking for a parking lot, a parking lot, a parking lot, we have no intention of doing anything else there. And I personally see being away from thirty A being more of a benefit because now cars can move as opposed to backing up on thirty A.
Well, one, one thing that I want to point out, thank you for bringing that up, one thing I wanted to point out is Chance, um, went back and made a recommendation to me when I spoke to him on the phone earlier. Um, so on his diagram, pardon me while I flip through my binder here to find the page. So on his diagram, you can see, um, actually, I'm just going to walk over here. So you can see on the bottom, south side of thirty A, there's some parking spots there, he's proposing to remove about four parking spots and do a loop around where you wouldn't have to circle back around thirty A, you can do it through the parking lot. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Because I see it dumps back out in the thirty A.
Correct, yeah, so he, he would eliminate, so we would, so instead of a hundred and fifteen spots, we'd lose about four spots, he thought.
Right, but I can see traffic backing up, heading westbound, trying to get a parking spots going north into Leisure Lane, that's just my.
Well, and we also have the ingress egress through Penny Lane, uh, to the north. Um, so on, on the top here, you can see Penny Lane.
Yep.
So Penny Lane flows into three ninety-three, so there'd be two points of ingress egress.
So, the building right there to the, uh, west of Leisure Lane, uh, that building is right on Leisure, I mean, there is no setback, it's right on Leisure Lane and there's some other properties in there that, I mean, come, so it's, that road isn't the best in the world.
Well, I think we'd make improvements to the road if we were to, you know, go after this for a parking lot, I think we'd improve the whole area, uh, with, you know, parking, um, rather, I'm sorry, uh, you know, improvements to Penny Lane, Leisure Lane, all to correspond with the parking lot if we were interested in this parcel.
For that, that building right there on the west corner, I mean, it is right, it's, it's hard to see around, I tried it. So, I don't know, I don't know if the design makes, makes, uh, in real.
Well, you know, just a suggestion, if that's a concern, we could make it where you have to go back around and you have to exit through, um, Penny Lane to three ninety-three, uh, versus onto thirty A, so you can get onto the property from thirty A, but you can't exit the property. So that, that's something we can certainly take into account if the board has concerns about that. We, I, I think Chance can address that and I'll certainly defer to him, I am not the traffic and parking engineer.
I've just personally run in the numbers, a hundred and fifty parking spots to a hundred and fifty, the increase of price. and fifty, the increase of price, because these are the, these are the prices you quoted.
Correct.
So like I said, it's Leisure Lane right now, it needs a supermajority, and it's thirty-seven percent more per square foot. And that's my, that's, that's apples-to-apples. That's not the extra thirty-five parking spots.
So, what do we need to do to that?
Y'all need to decide on which one y'all like and which one you want.
What's the Board's wishes? Do you want to take them separately, Sid, or should we...
Well, so, I mean, I, I don't know, but I don't think that the idea is that we would buy both properties.
No.
So, if anybody wants to make a motion on one of them, either approving or disapproving. And we have the contracts ready, they've been reviewed, so the motion would be to approve the contract and go forward with the purchase of the property.
I would, I would make a motion to buy, to execute the contract.
Mm-hmm, and before we...
On the 393 parcel, for this reason. It's, it's forest land, the demolition cost would be a lot smaller than the demolition, we're going to have to demolish three houses, a swimming pool, and Lord only knows what else. And we'd get more parking places, as Mr. Tousa pointed out, in the future, we could build structures there, parking structures, and there are other things, I mean, that's a large piece of property. Leisure Lane is narrow, a narrow piece of, and like I said, I went out there this afternoon after, and looked at both of them. And, and plus, 393 is cheaper per square foot, and it's cheaper per parking place.
Just one, one thing I forgot to mention, if you will allow me, Commissioner. The, in the original proposal from the 393 folks, there was some owner financing, and when we got the price down to average appraised value, the owner financing went away. So I just wanted to let y'all know that, so that's not an option. But we do have money to cover it, so we didn't need owner financing for that. So, just wanted to clarify that.
I'd like a second to Danny's motion.
All right, well, I can comment, Mr. Chair. The Leisure Lane property, even though it's narrow and all that, is closer to Ed Waleen, it's also closer to South Spooky, is that where it is?
Yeah, so, I have some numbers if you'd like.
Huh?
I have some numbers on that, if you'd like, I can give those to you.
The 393 property is some distance from Ed Waleen, and a long way over to the other one.
Right.
So, if that was purchased, you got to figure out, what are you going to do? You going to set up a shuttle service to get everybody down, from 393 down to the beach access?
Jay, what was the suggestion?
So, I, I have the distances, if you'd like, I can give you all the distances. So, from, let's talk about the 393 property. So it is a thousand feet from, and I don't have the distance to Spooky, but from Ed Waleen to 393 property is a thousand feet. And then Leisure Lane, from the end of Leisure Lane, the part, the part that touches thirty A, so not the part that's, you know, touching Penny Lane, but the part that's touching thirty A, that is three hundred and sixty-five feet to Ed Waleen, and then it's nine hundred and seventy feet to North Spooky Lane, and it's five hundred feet to Shell Seekers Cove. And then it is, if you go all the way from Leisure Lane to the beach at the end of North Spooky, I'm sorry, South Spooky, I keep saying North Spooky, that's fourteen hundred feet. So...
Did you have a figure for the north end of Leisure Lane, from the furthest point away to either one?
I don't have that.
How far?
That is probably almost parallel to the thousand feet to 393, because Penny, Penny Lane is right there. So, I would say it's probably right around a thousand feet, if I had to guess on that. That's not an accurate number, so don't hold me to that, but probably about a thousand feet.
So what did you say the end of Leisure Lane was to Ed Waleen?
So from the end of Leisure Lane, that's touching thirty A, that is to Ed Waleen three hundred and sixty-five feet.
Okay, and from there to Spooky is what?
So from there to Spooky, it's nine hundred and seventy feet.
Okay.
Now, if you're on the top side of that, you know, touching Penny Lane, with that, if you park all the way at the end, like I said, you can add probably about another thousand feet to that.
Well, in a perfect world, we'd have both of them. Both of them have, there's advantages and disadvantages to both.
There are. But in a perfect world, I mean, you know, we have eight and a half million dollars, and I'd like to buy this and then reserve some other funds for future purchases, I mean, you know, possibly a beach access in the near future.
I'm with you, I'm just saying...
Yeah. It, it would be nice, but...
But, I, I still, you know, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of growth coming in the future. And, you know, so we also have to have one eye on today, and we got to have one eye on tomorrow, and this, you know, of the two, if you can't have but one, the two point three acres gives us a lot of different options.
And I'll say this... I'll say this as far as a shuttle. You know, I say when we first installed the parking lot, let's actually try it for a season without the shuttle, and see how much it's used. If, if the parking lot's filled up, well then we know we don't need a shuttle, a shuttle. If it's half-filled up, then we say, okay, well then evidently we need a shuttle, and we can get a shuttle there. That's something we can play around with in the future. I don't think we need to make that decision here tonight.
And how, how many feet do we have at the beach at Ed Waleen?
Brian, do you know that, I think? How many feet we have at Ed Waleen? Around three hundred feet?
How much?
Around three hundred feet.
Okay, and we've got, how much at Spooky?
We have a thousand.
Thousand at Spooky. Okay, without a shuttle, you're basically saying Spooky's pretty much out for the, to the north end of Leisure Lane and the parcel on 393.
And Jay, you've always mentioned...
Let me, let me finish, please. Let him answer that question first, okay? So, from, from the 393 parcel, which is going to be well over two thousand feet to Spooky...
We definitely need a shuttle there.
Yeah.
Definitely need a shuttle there.
And, from, it would be, it would be a thousand feet to Ed Waleen, where we have three hundred feet, and virtually nonexistent if we don't get a shuttle to the thousand feet we have, that is being underused every day during the peak season. That's my only concern about the one on 393, is I, I feel like that we need, I feel like we need something closer to...
Well, I'm...
And, I mean, that's just my opinion.
I'm working on something else.
But I'd like to add, you're the one who turned me. I'm the one, I've always felt like it was for beachgoers, and you always remind me, it's for the people to enjoy every atmosphere of the beach. It's the restaurants, it's all the stores, and all the shopping and amenities. It's not just for the beach. So I think we've got a, we've got a motion. I guess I'll call the question?
Uh, yeah.
I guess, public comment?
Well, we...
If we call the question, there's no...
There's no more comment.
My apologies. I call the question?
Mr. Chairman, one order. Commissioners, in front of your agenda books, there's a list of how we conduct the meeting. And just in this last exchange here, there was commissioners stepping on other commissioners. And the proper way to do it is to ask the Chair for the floor, and as long as some other commissioners talking, you don't interrupt until they get done. And it makes things go quicker, it also allows the clerk to do what she needs to do to get an accurate record. So I would strongly urge just to adhere to those rules that we have set for a meeting.
Okay, did you have a comment?
I'm sorry, so the question's been called, so we need to have a vote on the matter.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries.
Okay, do you, so we don't want to consider the Leisure Lane properties? I mean, there, you guys have that opportunity if you wanted to, but, I don't want to step out on toes, but I personally, no, I don't think we can afford those.
I think by the vote you just took, I think you kind of answered the force.
I think I started the conversation away with Spooky, I mean, with Leisure Lane.
But, we, we'll keep our options open.
I'm, I'm still looking at that area. I've, I've talked to all y'all individually about some opportunities in the future there, and so I hope to bring something to you late spring, early summer.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Clarification on the last motion, did that, basically was to purchase that?
Yes.
And to approve the contract.
And approve the contract, okay.
Is that what you, okay?
That's what, that's what the attorney said, too.
And if we need to, I don't think there will be a motion on the other one.
No, I don't think it's necessary unless you wanted to make one.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The next item, number thirty-nine, "Request Approval of Members of the Managed Vendor Program Committee." So, at the last board meeting, you directed staff to schedule a meeting, so we can discuss the managed vendor program. And so we have that scheduled for this Thursday at two o'clock here at the annex. And so, I wanted to give you the list of the, here it is, the committee members. And so, they, we tried to keep this small. We know this is timely, and it can kind of get bogged down if it's a large committee. So, we think it's well-rounded, and so we'll give you the names, and you can tell us if you're good with those, or if you want to make any changes. So we have Lee Moore, Tim Norris, John Reichenbach, Philip Poundstone, and Chip Kobel.
Who was the second one?
The second one was Tim Norris.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry, Tim Norris.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, and just real quick, Lee Moore is on the Destination Improvement Committee. Philip Poundstone is obviously representative of the, but he's also on our Beach Management Committee. Tim Norris is on the TDC Council. John Reichenbach is on the South Walton Community Council, and Chip Kobel was at request of Commissioner Gladwell.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
I don't know if we need to broach the subject now, or allow the committee to meet on the fourteenth, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway. I think they need to consider two locations, Inlet Beach and Ed Waleen.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So it'd be part of the discussion on how to set it up and manage it.
Do we need a motion, or do we need just a staff direction?
Uh, just direction is fine.
Okay.
You know, if any of the other commissioners have any comments, so this would just be a direction that we would give to the committee. Chairman, Jay, do they know they're on the committee?
They do. We've spoken to all of them.
Well, they knew pending Board approval.
Correct, correct.
So we need, this request is for approval of easement.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item, number forty, is to request clarification on South Walton Fire District contract pertaining to equipment. So, at the BCC meeting, I guess at this point, a month ago, the Board approved the contract, and we spoke at length about a few different things. One was extending the season the year round, which that was clear in the motion, that the Board wanted to move in that direction. What wasn't clear, but we had lengthy discussion on, was whether we wanted to include the equipment upfront in the contract, or if we wanted to have the fire district come back and request that as needed. So, I'll just say, I think it's easier just to give, I mean, the fire district knows what their needs are, and so we don't have to keep coming back to you. My recommendation would be just to approve it, and I can just give you some quick details on that. It was in regards to jet skis and ATVs. So, the ATVs is for five per year for nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, not twenty-two. And then for the jet skis, it was for two this first year in nineteen. And the total cost of all that equipment was a hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars.
One fifty-one what?
One thousand, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And I can give you the breakdown per year if you'd like to.
But when we approved that contract, that extended contract, refresh my memory, that contract figure was inclusive of a hundred and fifty-one?
It was included in there, correct.
It's just whether to get it now, or them have to keep coming back.
Correct. Just wanted clarification, since it wasn't clear in the motion, just wanted to make sure to protect us and the fire district, that it was all clear.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we allow them to, to give what they need based upon the contract, without having to come back individually for each one.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Great, thank you very much. And then I have a few updates for the Board. I just wanted to give a couple of updates on the neighborhood beach access renovations that we're doing. Wanted to let you know that Group Two and Three are underway, so we have six regional beach accesses that have begun. Those should be completed around March fifteenth, and then I'll just give you those real quick. It's Holly, Camellia, Gardenia, Golf Lake Estates, Estates, Seabreeze, and Seacrest. And then once those is complete on March fifteenth, we'll begin with the second round, which that is Paleo, Ramsgate, Sugar Dunes, Wall Street, and those should be completed by April twenty-fifth. And again, this is just renovations, so new deck boards, new handrails, and then structural components as needed. So as they pull them apart, if they see any deficiencies, they'll make those repairs as they do that. So I just kind of wanted to give you an update on that. Wanted to give you an update on December TDT numbers. We were up three point one nine percent year-over-year, for a total of six hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Year-to-date, we are seventeen point one five percent higher, for a total of one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. So, I will stress, though, the increase of seventeen point one five percent is quite a bit of that is due to Hurricane Michael and relief workers over here in Walton County. So, as we're making our projections for next year, we'll be kind of planning accordingly, and not going by these numbers. We'll probably use last year's numbers, the previous year's numbers, because we want to make sure that we're accurate, and not getting ourselves into a situation where, you know, we come back and say, oh, well, we're down a little bit. Well, it makes sense that we're down, because we were so up by that influx of visitation in a, you know, shoulder season. Just kind of wanted to, just give some kudos out to the staff at the TDC. We have won four national awards for the Hospitality Sales and Marketing Association. We won one gold award for our brand print campaign, one silver award for some PR for a feature placement of the underwater museum of art, so thank you for that. We have gotten tremendous amount of press coverage on that. And then the, we won two bronze awards for our Endless Summer and Winter Escape campaigns. So, that's really exciting. And then lastly, we have distributed the beach maps to you guys, and so wanted you to take a look at those, and if you have any revisions that you want made, certainly feel free to let me or Brian know, and we will make those changes, and then we'll bring them back to you more formally at a subsequent meeting. And I kind of just wanted to get a little direction from the Board on that. You know, part of the point for the maps was to kind of do some evaluating and see how the Board wanted to move forward with existing beach accesses, and how we want to develop those. And so, wanted to see if you want us to bring that back, maybe at the next South Walton meeting, if you wanted to hold workshops. Just wanted a little direction on kind of what you think your, your vision is on that.
Bring it back, I think so.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would like to suggest that we bring it back, and maybe look at some workshops.
First of all, I'd like to see if you can make it bigger.
So, I, I talked to Laura about that, and I talked to Brian, and so I'm working on that. We're going to see if we can make you a bigger map, because the problem is, if we make the fonts bigger, then they start all running together. So, and we're going to try to make the map bigger and see if that works for you, and if it doesn't, then we thought about maybe a key, but then that might be hard for you to follow, to say, okay, well, one is, you know, Fort Panic, and two is whatever. That just might be hard for you to follow, to have to reference back and forth.
Not as hard as it is to read right now.
Well, I, I agree, so, but we'll, we'll get you a bigger map and see if that does what you needed to do, and if not, then we'll look for another option.
I was going to say, don't, don't, just think he's the only one with weak eyes. I got him too.
I mean, I'm just one here, I could, I had a, I couldn't read it.
So, okay, well, what we'll do is, we'll get larger maps to all of y'all, see if that meets your needs. If it doesn't, then we'll readdress it, but we'll get your larger maps.
And you're going to bring that back, you're going to meet with all the commissioners and bring that back, the...
I was just going to do it for the next South Walton meeting, if that's good for you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, great. Well, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Norris.
Yes, sir. Item number forty-three is a request to schedule and advertise a public hearing to consider amendments to the beach activities ordinance. You guys have the draft of beach activities ordinance in your agenda packet. This is a result of the workshop that we held last month. I would suggest that we consider either holding the public hearing at the Dufuniac Board Meeting, which is the twenty-sixth, or after our quasi-judicial land use items on the twenty-eighth of February. So, our quasi-judicial land use items are gonna be at the South Walton Annex. They're scheduled for nine AM, so we could do it after that's concluded. I checked, I want to say I checked with planning and we didn't have a lot on the agenda, but hopefully Max here could correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Since, since this, is, is the beach area and the vendors, I think that we need to do it in the south end at that meeting, that, that would be my suggestion.
February twenty-eighth, after the quasi-judicial items. So, what I'll do is, if you guys are okay with it, I'll advertise it for ten AM.
Okay.
And then, that way...
Okay.
Gives us an hour to go through land use hearing?
I really, I don't know if Max here, but I wanted to say that they told me that there was not a lot on the agenda. Do you know, Renee?
I know, I've got one out.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, or assume they're at ten AM.
Right, right. So, we're not locked in at ten. We, we do all the advertisements for as time-specific or as soon, as soon as possible thereafter.
Do we need a motion on that?
So moved to have that public hearing, South Walton on the twenty-eighth of February at ten AM or as soon thereafter.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? See none? Bob?
Thanks, Renee.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear what you said. This is for the Beach Activities Ordinance and you recommended Dufuniac, did I hear you say it's gonna be here on the twenty-eighth of March?
Twenty-eight.
Of February.
Of February, twenty-eight, February.
At ten AM.
Ten AM.
Mac, I want to say that I checked with Karen and there weren't a lot of things on the agenda. Do you know?
I don't think it's a large agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll hold you to it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. Commissioners, item number forty-four is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a contract for the sale of property in the Mossy Head Industrial Park. We, the, this board approved a highest and best use resolution last fall. This is the contract to sell that property according to the highest and best use resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Commissioners, item number forty-five is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the closing documents for the purchase of two parcels of property on East Los Avenue. These are the properties that are between my office and admin.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Chapman.
Okay, Commissioners, my first item for discussion is I'm requesting that we advertise and hold a BCC public workshop to discuss the Dufuniac Springs Country Club. I have done site visits, I've had a lot of discussions. And primarily, the intent of what I'm asking the board to consider is that we can all be in the same room, we all hear the same thing, because you may hear something that I haven't heard or vice versa. So, I think with something of this magnitude, we need to try and get together collectively and then, to put it all out on the table, let's talk about it, give your concerns, my concerns, whatever. But, I'm asking that we have this public workshop next Wednesday if I'm not mistaken, Sid.
Right, that's acceptable. So, if it's a workshop and we're not taking formal action, we'd just like to give five days' notice, so that should be...
Well, the primary thing is to have this thing discussed at a workshop on the twentieth so we can turn right around and hopefully can take formal action at the next board meeting, the twenty-seventh, I guess it is. So, if that's, I'll make the motion, we go ahead and have staff advertise for a BCC public workshop, nine AM, the twentieth of February at the Dufuniac Courthouse.
I'll second that.
Just for, just for clarification, I have a conflict of interest in that, so I won't be voting on this motion also or during...
Or attending the workshop.
You gonna attend?
Or you can attend the workshop if you'd like.
I don't want you to say nothing. Reclusive yourself, okay.
Got, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
And just so the record's clear, I'll make sure that the clerk has the recusal form for Commissioner Anderson's...
Yeah, and that's a four of, with me, of today.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, my second request tonight is to, and I do believe, let me make sure...
I'm sorry, what? So, I think the, there's an issue with the date that Commissioner Chapman picked?
Was it, I said the twentieth, is that a week from tomorrow?
I think that somebody's saying that there's something else scheduled at that time or...
The board rescheduled the Dufuniac that whole morning.
For who?
For who?
For the county wellness, the, the things to do every day.
Find another spot. Find another spot.
Yes, sir.
If, what, what is, what are we gonna have, wellness for the employees?
The screenings that we do every year with the Florida Blue, help them all as well.
Get with me after the meeting, I know where you have it.
Paragraphs? Yeah.
We've got it number four.
Yeah, I know it, been there. Okay, Mr. Chairman, may I continue?
You can.
Thank you. All right, I'm asking the board to approve a resolution that we were sent to Florida DOT to perform a safety audit and recommend modifications at the intersection of State Road eighty-one and County Road one eighty-one C and State Road eighty-one and County Road one eighty-three. If y'all have traveled that area, you know that you come eastbound on one eighty-three and you intersect with eighty-one, that if you're trying to go northbound, there's a hill right there to the right that it obscures the view of any northbound traffic. I've traveled it, I've almost got hit, I'm glad to hear that Brad Drake almost got tagged too, so that might help us a little bit as far as moving forward. But, I have talked with Brad about it. Brad is in support of this. I believe he's also reached out to the Secretary of DOT in Tallahassee and he assured us that he would move forward. They're asking the resolution to sort of show that the entire board is in favor of them looking at this and making some modifications. They've already released a contract for milling and resurfacing of eighty-one from the Holmes County Line all the way down to Bruce. I was hoping that if we can get this worked in using safety funds, that instead of them doing all that resurfacing and everything, go back and cut a hill out. That's mainly what we're trying to do, is lower the hills in those two locations so you have a better line of sight, try to get out there, because during the summer, it is a Daytona five hundred.
It'd be nice if they can, if we could get that commander road, because that's another part of that, is it?
Yeah, that's right. We got a river road coming off diagonally there from there, but I'm thinking the same thing would apply if they lowered about three foot, and that, that it would clear it where you can see.
I stood out there during the election, that's not a, that's a bad way to have.
But, that's my motion is...
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any, any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Okay, staff, Mary, I don't know whoever's gonna have to get this signed, would you make sure that Representative Drake gets a copy of it, Senator Gaynor, and Philip Gaynor, DOT District Three Secretary, and Kelly Beth Horton? Thank you all, Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Gladwell, you got anything?
No, sir.
Commissioner Nick?
No, sir, sitting good.
Commissioner Nipper?
Yes, sir.
I don't have anything either, so we'll move on to citizens' requests. Mr. Rich Johnson?
My name's Rich Johnson, I live in Walton County, up by the Okaloosa County Line off of Scenic Golf Drive. I'm also the general manager of the Embassy Suites. My concern is the traffic on Scenic Golf Drive and especially in the area amongst where my hotel lies. The traffic typically is much slower at the, at the crest of that hill as you get up by Seascape and you see the water and from that, that area to the Okaloosa County Line as opposed to when you hit the hill coming down right at the new beach access that you purchased at Amalfi and down past my hotel, past Surf Hut and on to, on to ninety-eight. Walton County, in, in, in looking at some of the things, Walton County, we have two about three miles of that roadway and Okaloosa has two miles of that roadway. And I did, I did a small sketch that, that was in the packet that I had sent earlier talking about how many different things that Okaloosa County has in their two, two-mile area versus what we have in our three-mile area. We have one stop sign and no other traffic calming measures. Where Okaloosa has three stop signs and seven traffic calming measures with speed humps, not to include, there's actually in the area where Destiny East is, you have to go past some, some median way as you run down through there. And what brought this to, really to, to, to the point of my attention was that back on October, I believe it was October nineteenth, about seven forty in the evening, there was a woman that was struck at the crosswalk where my hotel is, is she was going over the Surf Hut, I believe, and she was killed there. So, and I've gotten several different comments from guests that stay in the hotel talking about how fast the traffic traverses through that area. And I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm looking, I want to look out for the county, I want to look out for my best, I want to look out for the people that live in our area. We're, we're a very high-density area, the Surf Hut is a very popular restaurant, we're adding another hotel right down by the, the Wind Dixie, between Wind Dixie and, and Chick-fil-A there. There'll be another hundred and twenty rooms that's, you know, in the summertime, I'm a restaurant, I mean, I'm a hotelier, you know, my hotel, I have six, seven hundred people in the hotel every day all through the summer, so they're all crossing, they're all crossing the road. We're adding another four hundred or so, hope people in that hotel that are gonna need to cross the road there. Like I said, we're in a really high-density area. All our condos are on the, are on the north side of Scenic Golf, whereas even like in Okaloosa, their condos are basically on the south side of Scenic Golf. We have a lot more density of folks that are needing to travel across the way. And I just think that, that we're doing a disservice to the, to the residents and the folks that are coming and visiting us that are paying all of our salaries with, with tax dollars and things like that, in, in, in trying to keep them safe. You know, and I, I did speak with Chance about this and, and he, he told me that there's a lot of different things that would inhibit us to do the same things that, that Okaloosa County did. And Okaloosa County, that's a whole different county. But, you know, if, 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 if I had a relative that was, that had an issue and got, got struck by a car and, and I, I would just take that, you know, there's two miles on the same exact roadway and all these things being done on that county. And then, you look at our county, there's one stop sign in, in our side of the three-mile stretch. Now, I'm not saying, you know, their stop signs are all set up where it intersects with nine, where the roadway intersects with ninety-eight. You know, we have a couple of those roads, I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not saying that I'm a road engineer or that I know anything more than anything else, I'm just a regular guy and, but I do have concerns for the folks that, that come and visit us and, and, you know, especially my hotel where, heck, I live right there, you know, and, and I, my office, I, I look out at the roadway, I watch the traffic go up and down and, you know, I, I drive it every day, I drive both ways every day, it's much easier to drive twenty-five going the other way and it's much easier to drive thirty-five, forty miles an hour going through our county. And, and it's, you know, to me, I just feel, you know, we have a duty to, to the folks that come visit us.
Mr. Johnson, what's your ask? What are you asking for?
Well, some type of additional calm, street calming measure. Maybe, you know, Chance said that he did not like the speed humps like they have in Okaloosa because, you know, the, the emergency vehicles. Maybe we could add pavement speed limit signs or big markers that are in the roadway. I had, you know, I didn't put in my packet, there's an example here that, you know, just, just a large, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Just, just a large...
We're gonna have to keep this if that's...
Yeah, you can have it, I don't, you know, I don't mean...
Make sure...
Just, just something that's large and printed, you know, that's on the roadway. Or additional signage that would tell the people that they have to stop at the, at the crosswalks or make the crosswalks just a little more visible if we can. Even, even today, you know, my director of sales said that there was a sheriff's vehicle that went past, she goes, she goes, you know, she was turning and she, he was going the other direction, she said he had to be doing forty mile an hour down through there. And it's just easy, it's just ea, because there's no impediment between, where you, you crest that area up at, at the top of Seascape till you get all the way to ninety-eight and it's just, it's traffic is very fast.
Well, I understand your concerns and, and there's a lot of things that factor in to what happened with that, that lady, I'm sorry.
And I understand, it was not, it was not speed.
There was no speed involved. People don't realize that once pedestrians enter a crosswalk, they're required by law to stop.
Correct.
He didn't. And the only thing, we can put all the signage out there in the world or measures such as flashlights, whatever, but we don't have the enforcement ability from the sheriff's office and I'm talking to you guys, of course, not y'all, y'all work in the courtroom.
And I understand that they can't just sit there.
I know he can't sit there, but he can increase the patrol activity there or amount of time that they show up, but...
And they have put the, the speed sign in front of my property a few times, several times and on those days, you do see the, the traffic slow down. But, you know, especially with ninety-eight being so, all tore up with construction, we're getting heavier traffic on Scenic Golf Drive and, you know, I'm getting, and I'm getting dump trucks and there's all kind of large vehicles that travel half. You know, I had a little, you know, last year, I had a little kid who was like this big, who came back from the beach, went to go to his hotel room, but didn't bring his mom and dad with him, they were out on the beach looking for him, he crossed the road by himself and, you know, I, I would just, I would hate for something to happen.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What about those, I saw some over at Gulf Place today, the little stop signs that are in the middle of the road?
Yeah.
The breakaways?
Yeah.
Let, excuse me, Mr. Johnson, let's let, let's let our, one of our Public Works guys address some of these issues.
Buddy Wright, Walton County Public Works, Chance would normally be speaking of this, but I, he's talked to me, Phil being on it. The impavement marking signs, the flexible signs, I think, one of you had brought up. We have mounted those in the, in the center of the road on a couple of occasions. Now, the, Chance brought before the board a, a crosswalk policy a while back. It was silent on those that, you know, we, we kind of left them out. If, if the board's inclined, we could certainly work with Mr. Johnstone and provide one at that location. Now, typically, this is a location to a private crosswalk, so typically, the, the person requesting would, would bear the cost of that, I think they're about four hundred dollars, so if, you know, our, our protocol is typically they would provide for that, so if he wants to purchase it, we can certainly install it for him if, if he thinks that will help.
Would you be willing to do that, sir?
Yeah, I, yes.
Okay, all right.
Need a motion or...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Make a...
Yeah, let's, go ahead.
You got something else you want to do?
No, go ahead, you got four.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead and make a motion that would allow Public Works to install Mr. Johnstone's, what do they call him, got a name for him?
They're flexible and pavement signs.
Okay, pavement, safety signs.
Yeah, it says must stop for pedestrian crossing or it's, it's rubber on.
All right, well, it's just to make sure that once you've got it purchased and it's on site, coordinate with Public Works to see when they can get out there and install it.
I, I, I...
That's my motion.
And, and, I'm sorry, and if, if I may, Commissioner, Chance had asked me to talk with y'all, all, all those signs, you know, you know, the, the, the crosswalk policy kind of was silent on them, there's a couple other locations where we've had similar requests for those, so...
Are, are they paying for them?
They, they would be if it, it would be...
Bring it to us. Why don't we let, um, staff work on revising that policy to include these type signs and, and call share in those type things and get it back to the board for your approval or for your consideration. But, your action tonight would give them permission to move forward with Mr. Johnstone.
Okay. Is that, that, you care what that's...
There's actually, it's kind of crazy, there's actually 26 crossings in our small little area of, or three miles. There's just, there's just a lot of crossing that's going on there, and, you know, the traffic is very heavy, so I appreciate it.
Okay, that's your motion, then. We'll go ahead and work for him, get it done quickly, and then bring us back a request on the other two?
Yes, sir.
Well, if we amend the policy, Public Works can handle it without bringing the request back to you.
All right, so.
A motion to amend it. Do we need to amend any of the other part?
Just motion to.
To approve his.
His request.
Original motion to, go ahead and move forward, proving him.
And then we'll bring a revision to the policy back for you to amend, or consider amendment.
Okay, any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Okay, what's your, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for coming in. Okay, any public comment on any subject?
I have seven, so you can get one too.
Oh, thank you.
Koi Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Okay, the first, the first page that you're looking at is basically a review of the Baker Block system. It's the way that our country was measured by Lewis and Clark, 33 feet at a time. The first three numbers of every parcel number, this is what you get. This is an old map, you can tell because they use Roman numerals, not numbers. And then there's a little schematic down in the bottom left that basically explains to you how to map a section of a Baker Block. So this next page brings you to our area, from north of the bay to Freeport, is one south, range 19 west. And this is what I call a deedery, it's the chain of deeds associated with this section of this Baker Block. And for your benefit, I've clipped out the seller-buyer, the schematic of the mapping, and then the little section square that I've mapped. And we don't have to go through all of these, I've clipped the next few pages together. We don't have to look at them individually, you can do that later. But this is the chain of deeds associated, back to the oldest one listed online. I just want to mention this one on page 405, book 405, 109, down at the bottom. It says, "The grantee may peaceably and quietly enjoy and possess the property." Okay, so now we're going to go back to the oldest deed associated with this parcel of land. It's the Amex Forest Products, Inc., from 1976, and I'm just going to read a few highlights from it. "The grantor hereby reserves ownership of all oil, gas, distillate, sulfur, phosphate, phosphorus rock, phosphoric substances, common and unique, located in, on, or under the real property." Scrolling down, herein called minerals, "This reservation includes the right to use the surface of the property at any time in any manner required convenient, required or convenient in connection with mining." Scrolling down to A, "Such activities include, but are not limited to, the right to enter the surface and subsurface of the property, to damage, destroy, dismantle any improvements, crops, or timber now or hereafter on the property." Scrolling down to E, "To use the property for disposal of tailings, sands, clays, slimes, and other wastes associated with mining." The next page, they be sure, they make sure to mention to you that this may substantially change the condition of the property. Scrolling down, it says, "Grantor shall follow recognized standards of good mining practices." And it looks like I'm running out of time, so I just want to get to the last page where it says, "The grantor shall indemnify the grantee against all claims that arise out of bodily injury and death." So I would like to know how the grantor is going to compensate the grantee when he is dead under his excavator from the mining project. So I wanted to draw your attention to a section a little bit west of here, at 14 West, One North, Section 8. There is only one name listed in the Spanish land grants for this section, and that is a John D. Dykes. So I drove over there, this is about halfway up 77 to Chipley, and I found the John David Dykes Cemetery, where he is most assuredly restfully and peacefully enjoying that property.
Ms. Bowman, your time's up.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. This is the planning section of our agenda tonight. We have two legislative items that we wish to ask you to continue to March 12. That would be, first item is the Chapter 5 of the Land Development Code, and the second item is the Stormwater Technical Manual, that's a companion to Chapter 5 of the Land Development Code. We're still having workshops, and we have a working group related to stormwater. So we're still working on that, and we ask that you give us a little bit more time before we bring that before you.
Okay, so you're asking to continue both of them?
Yes, sir, to March 12, at South Walton Annex, at 4:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Thank you. The next two items, Commissioners, are quasi-judicial in nature.
Anyone who anticipates testifying on the remaining agenda items, if you would stand, be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth? Thank you. Whenever you come forward, if you would, state your name and state that you've been sworn in.
Both of these items are.
Oh, and I'm sorry, have any of the Commissioners had any ex parte communications on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, now we're ready to proceed.
Both these items relate to the Water Sound North, DRI, and PUD, and they've been reviewed by Renee Bradley, and I'll ask her to briefly introduce those for you.
Good evening, Commissioners. First, I'd like to enter staff reports in the record, please, for the major project 18-00036, the Plan Unit Development Amendment, and also the MPC 18-00001 for the DRI amendment, please.
So moved.
Thank you. This is a request to amend the Water Sound North Development Regional Impact and Plan Unit Development located at east end of Walton County, in north and south of US Highway 98. The request is seeking to relocate and modify residential density, golf holes, and commercial square footage in accordance with the approved equivalency matrix in Resolution 2005-40, Exhibit D. The proposed amendment will also refine the locations of residential areas, parks and recreation, conservation open space, mixed-use areas. The total amounts of recreation, open space acres will remain the same as the previously approved development order. Staff only has one amendment or basically condition on this that we're requesting, and that is due to the density and intensity being transferred to the Camp Creek area south of US Highway 98, staff's request and condition in the final order is follows. Prior issuance of any development orders for any project of the Water Sound North Plan Unit Development or Development Regional Impact south of US Highway 98, that will be required to do a traffic analysis, including operational improvements for the Water Sound Parkway and 38 intersection. We have no other technical comments outstanding on this project, and have no other objections to the approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions to the board.
Does the applicant have anything to say about this?
I'll just do a brief overview. I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering, and I have been sworn in. And I'm representing the St. Joe Company, and as Renee presented, as part of Resolution 2005-40, there's an equivalency matrix that allows us to reallocate uses within the DRI and exchange uses. And as part of that approval, going through that reallocation, we do not increase traffic concurrency by utilizing that equivalency matrix. And I would like to briefly go through specifically what we're doing. And we're converting 39 multifamily dwelling units, 34,400 square feet of office, and six golf course holes for an additional 160 single-family residential dwelling units. And we're also reallocating. This is Water Sound North, and this is US Highway 98, Camp Creek. So we're reallocating 52,835 square feet of retail from Water Sound North to Camp Creek. And we're also reallocating 20,000 square feet of office from Water Sound North to Camp Creek. And that is what is before you, so I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
And you do agree with the amendments that they've added?
The condition, yes, sir, we did. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any questions for him? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience?
Can we get two motions on this project, one for the ordinance, then one for the PUD amendment?
Can we do that?
I thought they were two separate items, right? They're two separate items if we could give a location. And basically, I put them together because they're the same staff report, it's the same, it's identical.
Would you like to amend your motion, Commissioner Flidlin?
Yes, we'll just do the first report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? Ms. Bowman.
Koi Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Okay, you're looking at a picture of something really gross that is actually classified as a St. Joe Conservation easement. This is a slime dump from mining, because St. Joe doesn't own the land they own, and every single deed that's ever been sold down here says that nobody owns the mineral rights to their residential property. That's because the mineral rights were never for sale in the Panhandle. But somehow, St. Joe ended up with some mineral rights now. The man, oh, he left already, on the Planning or Building Department, I'm not sure which one he is. He actually admitted to me that it was all made up, which is really silly, because I got him out in the parking lot saying that. Because y'all had been making up land deeds for so long, somebody started making up mineral deeds, and it's all fake anyways. So this is a St. Joe property, and you can see the chain of deeds on it says Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and that this is a conservation easement that was donated for $100. And if you go down there to that very one in 1988, you'll see I've done this again, where I've mapped the sections that are included in this land, and it's actually part of, lo and behold, the railroad deed. So now, would you like me to hand these out now, or the next one? Because y'all never used to time this, but I see this time going by. Okay, so the problem here is, the reason that they want to move everything around is because they've, okay, this lot is not the land they're talking about, this is just another piece of land that St. Joe owns. This is the lot in front of the small mark by the Terramar, which is now like a 50-foot hole in the earth at CW Roberts. At least, the equipment that's out there says CWR on it, which are the people who somehow seem to be the only people that ever bid to do the roadwork around here. That's because the road thinks that it owns mineral rights. So the reason that St. Joe donates their land to the Department of Transportation is not just so that the road can put a road through it, it's so that they can sort of like manipulate the system so that it's not really mine, and it's not really yours, and I'm doing what I'm not supposed to do, but I can blame it on the last guy, because all of the mineral rights were reserved by somebody before us. Even the Amex from 76, his mineral rights were somebody before him. So all of this land that St. Joe wants to sell and turn into homes, the previous owner of that land actually has the right to kill all of those people that are on there. Because these ridiculous deeds that were written back in the 50s were like about killing Indians and getting rid of Indians. And then somehow, now it's translated into crazy strip mining that is, is, this, my question for this picture in particular is, are the continual payments from BP that are supposed to be called reimbursement for the damage that the spill did, is that actually a way of paying to dump the crude oil right here on this barrier island? That's why St. Joe shouldn't be allowed to do anything.
All in favor?
Yes, we did have a motion, right, okay, sorry.
All opposed? Motion carries? Is that, is that it, Matt?
We also need a motion on the second approval.
All right.
Which is the PUD amendment.
The second item is the DRI amendment, first item was the PUD amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience?
Koi, is this essentially the same thing you said in the last public comment section? Okay. Please try to refrain from being repetitive.
Oh, sure. This is deed number 11994, the map that I've mapped. I've mapped the entire railroad deed, okay? You can see, here's the Chautauqua Peninsula, the Eagle's Claw, it's very recognizable. This is why St. Joe doesn't own any of their land, okay? So now, once again, we have the chain of deeds. This is what I call a full-circle deed. It was the Internal Improvement Trust Fund of the State of Florida that leased the Panhandle to the railroad. All the way in the back here, you'll see a close-up of the Chautauqua Peninsula and the mappings of different deeds that are on it. The most recent was the Internal Improvements Trust Fund of the State of Florida, selling three blocks of land right here behind us, what I call the Chad Holly Corridor, between Chad Holly and 98, where the Foremans have been doing all that fracking. The next page is really ridiculous literature that Florida has written that's, and they've been doing this about every two decades. They seem to write a new piece of paper that says they can just do whatever they want, okay? So what happened was, somebody wanted this land really bad. They didn't like the fact that the US government granted it to the Indians who owned it in the first place. So they chased all of them away, killed them, scared them, bribed them, tricked them, whatever they had to do to get rid of it, to get rid of them, and then they had to convert the land in some way. So the State of Florida said, well, since there's nobody on this land anymore, we're just going to say it's all ours. The T, the trustees of the Internal Improvements Trust Fund, and they did this again in 1985. Oh, nobody's on it, they haven't paid their taxes, because our grandparents killed them 100 years ago or made them go out west. So all of this, what was public land, and the reason it was public is because it was supposed to be for everybody. That's why it was open land, that's why it was Indian land, it was supposed to be shared among all of the American people for its beauty and uniqueness. But the State of Florida said that since the owners, original owners weren't around, it's just going to be ours, and we can do whatever we want with it, and they keep saying, they said it in 1937 with the Murphy Act, they said it in 1967 with this other gibberish on here. And then down in the bottom, of course, it mentions that when the State of Florida sells this land, they keep 3/4 of the mineral rights. So what's actually going on is that the State of Florida has been stealing from the American public, not compensating them in any way, taking money from an oil company to destroy our beautiful land down here. And if you think that crude isn't seeping down into the lakes and the water system, and it's not going to just pop up on the beach one day, you're out of your mind. So anyways, this is why St. Joe isn't allowed to do anything, all of this land belongs to me, according to President John Adams and President Andrew Jackson. So please be advised, this is all a rough draft of what I will be submitting to the President of the United States, who's going to come down here and fire each and every one of you. Thank you, he has the power to.
Well, tell him I said hello.
Motion to approve. I think we've gotten a motion to approve.
In a second.
Second.
Aye, all opposed. We are adjourned.